Everybody be seated, please. Welcome to the Woodland Park City Council meeting for Thursday, June the 7th. Cindy, if you take the role, please.
Thank you. Mayor Turley.
Here.
Gary Brevetto.
Here.
Bob Carlson.
Here.
Terry Harrison.
Here.
Carol Harvey.
Here.
John Schaper.
Here.
Eric Smith. Thank you.
And if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for being here. If you all notice, I'm a little bit casual tonight with my shorts on and I've still got my shirt on. I'm a counselor at the American Legion Colorado Boys State down at CSU Pueblo. And in fact, we have 174 young men, it'll be seniors, in high school from across Colorado. And so it's been a busy week. I just drove up for the council meeting tonight and will be returning to CSU Pueblo after the council meeting tonight. And it's just a great week and hearing a lot of things as the kids learn about citizenship and government. So we'll move right in. Do we have any ceremonies, presentations, or appointments tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. And additions, deletions, or corrections?
No.
Okay, very good. Let's move on to the calendar then. And Cindy, please.
Thank you. We just have the minutes of the May 17th regular meeting and then consideration of approval of the renewal application for the 3-2 beer license, retail license at Walmart. Staff recommends approval for both items. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council for Cindy? Very good. So we can open up to see if there's any public comment for this?
Generally not necessary, but you certainly can.
Okay. Any comment on these? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
To approve.
I have a motion, second?
Second.
I have a second? Any discussion? Cindy, we'll take a vote, please.
Thank you. Brevetto.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Harrison.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Schaper.
Yes.
Turley.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously?
And I believe we have no unfinished business, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we'll move on to ordinance on initial posting. First would be ordinance number 1164, and I will turn to Scott for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Scott.
This is the first reading of this ordinance. It wasn't my intention to go into a presentation at this time because the public hearing will be on June 27th. So if you don't have any questions, I would just recommend that you approve this on initial posting and set the public hearing for June 27th.
And this is ordinance number 1164 for initial posting on a conditional use permit for a wholesale trade and distribution establishment used for the Paradox Beer Company here in Woodland Park. Any questions from council for Scott? Yes, Terry.
Scott, who owns that building now?
The building is owned by Vector Bank.
Any other questions for Scott? If none, then let's take a vote on this, please.
Any motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Man, you can tell, I've been hearing motions all week from the kids. Entertain a motion, please.
I'll move to approve on initial posting the ordinance number 1164 for conditional use permit.
Second.
Any discussion? And just for the record, I didn't say it, the public hearing would be at the June 27th meeting of the Woodland Park City Council.
Correct.
Cindy?
Thank you. Carlson.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Schaper.
Yes.
Turley.
Yes.
Brevetto.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously?
And then there's a slight change in the sequence of events. We need to actually move on to item 9A, which is, will in fact be a public hearing for resolution number 744 concerning the annexation of land at 1100 Rampart Range Road. And I'll turn to Sally for that.
Thank you. Ordinance 1165 on initial posting, we are going to ask that you delay action on that until we hold item 9A, which is the public hearing for the annexation. That way you'll have a chance to review the case first and then be familiar with it and then move forward with the ordinance on initial posting for this annexation.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. I have a brief PowerPoint this evening to share with you. And I'm sure I choose the right.
As Sally's queuing that up, let me remind council that as you're speaking into the microphone, because we are broadcasting and recording, please make sure that you speak into the microphone so that it can be captured so that the audience can hear your wisdom.
Or lack thereof. Sorry, for some reason I've lost my...
They like to go to sleep on you, don't they?
Yes. Just take me a minute to find the Gilliam. Resolution 744 is setting forth the findings of facts and conclusions for the Gilliam Thunderhead LLC annexation request. And I'll briefly walk you through the annexation and zoning process. We have completed the first four steps, which you'll recall started on May 3rd with the resolution of 743 for substantial compliance. We also initiated the public notice, which was published for at least 30 days prior to tonight's hearing. The staff drafted an annexation agreement, which was attached to the annexation ordinance in draft form. And notices were sent to the taxing districts that included fire, library, school district, and the ambulance district, and that was done 25 days prior to our hearing. And then tonight is the first public hearing for resolution 744 and the first reading of the annexation ordinance. After tonight, the next steps will include the planning commission. Next Thursday, they will be reviewing the zoning ordinance for this property, which is proposed to be zoned suburban residential. That is a density of no more than one dwelling unit per gross acre. And I'll get into more on that. Then the second public hearing and final hearing will be held on June 27th on the annexation ordinance and the agreement. So that's the process. And for tonight, most of you are very familiar with the property that is on Rampart Range Road and the existing structures that used to be the Thunderhead Bar. And in your packets, there is also an annexation map that shows driveway or the gravel drive, the existing structures. One of these structures has been removed as part of the cleanup process by the owners. And then there's a barn and a couple of other small outbuildings. Eligibility for annexation is based on four areas: contiguity, a community of interest, that the area is urban or can be urbanized, and that it can be capable of being integrated into the city. For this proposal of the 3.736 acre tract, it is entirely surrounded by the city, as you can see by the current zoning map. And the surrounding land uses include churches that are zoned suburban residential to the east, single-family lots to the north and to the west that are zoned urban residential that allows for up to two dwelling units per acre. And then to the south is the Westwood Trace Multifamily Project that is zoned multifamily urban that is developed out at 20 units per acre. So the Gilliam's property here wholly in a donut hole, surrounded totally by city property, is proposed to be zoned suburban residential at three units maximum. With the findings for eligibility, it certainly does meet the contiguity requirement. As far as the community of interest, this fills in a hole in the donut, so there is a community of interest and is surrounded by infrastructure that can serve this area for water and sewer and access and roads. And therefore, it is capable of being integrated into the city. With respect to the limitations, it meets all these limitations since all of them are not applicable to this site. And that's detailed in your staff report. After you hold a public hearing, we would request that you approve resolution 744, setting forth the findings of facts and conclusions. And this evening, the owners of the property are here, Karen and Doug Gilliam, and are happy to answer any questions. I might add that their plan is to either renovate the existing structure for a habitable space or add a habitable space and the existing structures will function as accessory structures on the site. That would be their intent initially. And then perhaps sometime in the future, they may pursue the subdivision of the property into three lots, which is quite doable on this developable site. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Does the applicant wish to make any presentation?
Not necessary, but just wanted to make up the offer. Not unless you have a question.
No. Council, do you have any questions for Sally or the applicant? Terry?
Well, maybe it's not for Sally, maybe it's for Kip. Right now, that property is on a leach field for sewer, isn't it?
Septic field, yes.
But it also has a well or two on that property.
There's one existing well.
Pardon?
There's one existing well.
Well, that existing, if they hook on to, will they be using that well or for their own use or will they be hooking on to the city water system?
They can use that well for their own use.
Yes, they can. If they were to subdivide it into the three lots, Kip, would they still be able to use that well and would that well supply all three lots?
No, that well can only supply the existing structure or one habitable space. The other two proposed lots would have to tie into city water.
Then if they did choose to come on to the city water system, they don't have to, but if they did choose to, could they go ahead and keep that well active and use it for agriculture or anything else, or would they have to close the well down?
Once they choose to go on city water for that site, that well and its associated rights would be turned over to the city and they would have access to the city water system.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I recognize that should this be...
Bob, if you could lean forward into the microphone, please.
I recognize that should we annex this property and then when they build two additional new structures or replace the existing one with a new structure, as part of the building permit process, they would be paying impact fees with really odd debt. But when we do annex a property, is there any equivalent of impact fees by bringing a property onto, into the city?
What kind of fees are you referring to?
I mean, they are having an impact on the city perhaps, possibly. So is that a consideration at all?
Usually when it is raw land, there are not impact fees assigned or assessed at that time. It is triggered when the development occurs because that is what creates the impact.
Theoretically, if they had developed this while it's still part of Teller County and then annexed it after all of that building permitting process was done and didn't pay Teller County impact fees, would we have recourse there?
Everything is negotiable at the time of annexation. So if the council felt at that time a previously developed property that was developed in the county was coming into the city and there needed to be an assessment, and that has happened with the Tammerack, the reserve at Tammerack, there were impact fees assessed for parks on any new houses that were going to be built. They would pay the park capital fee at that time. So there is an opportunity to do that on previously developed, but it's a case-by-case scenario. You have to evaluate specifically how that property was developed and then what are the reasonable impacts that could be uniquely assessed to that site.
So that could be a part of the process, but in this particular case, there wasn't really an impact, so that's not part of the...
In this particular case, no. Because right now, they have no habitable structures and the impact fees will be assessed for water and sewer, or if they choose to go on water, but for sewer, transportation capital, stormwater capital, those will be assessed at the time that they apply for their zoning development permit to build a habitable space.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Terry?
Sally, one other thing. You made mention that one of the structures had been removed. That was the small cinder block structure that, just north of the old Thunderhead.
That's correct. Yes.
Any other questions? Yes, John?
Is the current structure considered habitable or not?
It is not, no. And that's really because the septic system has been designated as failed and so there is not an appropriate system for waste removal.
Any other questions for Sally?
No, but John probably never got to go to the Thunderhead when it was active. It was really inhabitable. Even then? Yeah, I can guarantee it.
Yeah, I think Terry's probably been there. I know I have. So if there's no other questions at this point from council, I'll open the floor for a public comment on this. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Does council have any final questions? Any other comments from council? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number 744, which is agenda item 9A.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion by council? Hearing none, Cindy, we'll take a vote, please.
Thank you. The motion is to approve resolution 744. Harrison.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Schaper.
Yes.
Turley.
Yes.
Brevetto.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously?
And at this time, we'll move, since we've set forth the findings of fact and conclusion, we'll move on to ordinance number 1165 on initial posting concerning the same piece of property.
That's correct. So because this is the ordinance for initial posting and setting the public hearing for June 27th, we recommend that you move to approve. And at that time during the hearing, we will discuss the annexation agreement in more detail.
Any questions for Sally on the process? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 1165 on initial posting and set the public hearing for June 27th.
Thanks, Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Motion is to approve 1165. Harvey.
Yes.
Schaper.
Yes.
Turley.
Yes.
Brevetto.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously?
And at this time, we'll move on to item 9B. And this is for approval of ordinance number 1162, change of zoning designation from agricultural to planned unit development. And Sally's going to give us the details on this. And there will be a public hearing as a part of this process. So Sally.
That's correct. Thank you. This is a change to the zoning designation of agricultural to planned unit development for the purpose of establishing a planned business development in accordance with the sanctuary's final development plan and preliminary plat to relocate and operate the Caris Bible College with a religious educational center, student housing, administrative building, and associated uses developed on a 147 acre tract of land that's located at 5849 Trout Creek Road in Woodland Park. And I would like to begin by, to quickly go over what to expect in this evening's hearing. The applicant is going to do a presentation first. Council will have an opportunity to ask questions or clarifications of the applicant. Then I will provide an overview of the compliance with the code of a PUD as well as the conditional use or special use permits and the preliminary plat. You'll be able to ask questions at that time. After the presentation by the staff, then public comment will be heard. The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. Close the public comment. Council will have an opportunity to deliberate your opinions at that time, express your opinions on the case. And then there are four motions associated with this case. So you will, I will review those as part of my presentation and have a roll call vote. So that's the process for tonight's hearing regarding the Womack Ministries' mittel. Quick review of where we have been, and this is the final step in the process. It began on September 1st with council approving the annexation ordinance for the 35 acre tract and then moved into the zoning request. In September and October, the planning commission reviewed a preliminary plan for the PUD/PBD and accepted that plan. The applicant then moved forward with preparing a detailed PUD/PBD plan and preliminary plat for planning commission's review and ultimately council's approval this evening. On April 12th, the planning commission held a public hearing and then forwarded their recommendation of approval with 14 conditions to you this evening. Tonight's hearing is the final step in the process to consider the zoning change. After the applicant's presentation, I will review the compliance of codes that will include the PUD standards as well as the conditional use and special use standards and the preliminary plat standards. At the end of the hearing this evening, the four motions, the first motion will deal with the final development plan and the 14 conditions. The second motion is regarding the ordinance itself, 1162. The third motion is the preliminary plat. And then the last motion is an amendment that was requested by Teller County to the annexation agreement that was approved back on September 1st. With that, I will now turn this over to the applicant and introduce to you Larry Bozeman, who is the operations manager for Womack Ministries.
Thanks, Sally. Welcome, Larry.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
All right. My name is Larry Bozeman, and I'm the operations manager for Andrew Womack Ministries located at 850 Elpton Drive, Colorado Springs, Colorado. And I thank you all for hearing us this evening and just kind of want to give, some of the members of the council who know or knew, want to kind of give you an overview of what the campus of, the campus of Caris Bible College would look like and what our intentions and plans are. And I have several members of my team who are experts in various areas that will provide some expert testimony and information for you as well. The Caris Bible College is a, not accredited, but approved Bible college, approved by the Board of Higher Education of Colorado to provide degrees for people who complete our two-year course. It's similar to a vocational school. And the Colorado, the Caris Bible College is a non-typical college in the fact that our youngest student is about 18 years old and our oldest student is 89 years old at the current time. The average age is 43. I'm a product of the Caris Bible College, having graduated in 2008. And as you could, some of you may can tell, I wasn't 18 when I started there. So our students are from all walks of life, from professions, from blue collar jobs, they're business owners, and they are young people coming right out of high school. So there's a broad mix of age, there's a broad mix of backgrounds, and it's a good blend, I think, for the Woodland Park community. Currently, and the reason that we were, are looking to make a move, we have facilities in Colorado Springs that we've occupied for a number of years now, but we've outgrown those facilities and are looking to expand and found this property in Woodland Park that provides that opportunity for us. We've tried to give attention to all the questions and concerns that have been raised by the community residents here and the council, and we think we've addressed those adequately. And hopefully, in the upcoming presentations by these folks, that we'll be able to demonstrate that. So without any further ado, if you have any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll turn this thing over to our civil engineer, I'm sorry, our architect, Brett Prather.
Any questions for Larry? Yes, Terry.
Larry, what's the, what is the average age? Sorry about that. What is the average age of your students?
Average age is 43.
That's what.
Anything else?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That works. Good.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Once again, be good to get your, for the record, your name, your address, and your position.
My name is Brett Prather with Architectural Innovations. We're located at 1271 Kelly Johnson Boulevard, Suite 111 in Colorado Springs. And I'll speak for the team. It's a privilege to be here tonight and present Caris Bible College to you. We're excited about the project. As you can see here on the slides, we have the perspective showing you a view from the southeast and of the west elevations of the project. And the first thing I want to discuss is, when we met with Andrew, one of the first things he did with us when we walked the site was he talked about site locations. He wanted to have the least impact on the site possible, so he wanted to be very harmonious with the location on the site. This included the college, as you see it right here, the Caris Bible College, the entry to the site, the roadways, the pavilion, and even the student housing to be extremely harmonious with minimal impact on vegetation and the flow of the land.
So that was something that's really critical, which we were excited about. And actually, a testament to that also was the very first slide I think Sally had was of the signage on twenty-four. We asked him, "What kinda signage would you like?" And we actually pictured something that, a little more grandiose. And he said, "Very mild and meek." And basically, you saw the simple sign of the sanctuary, a, a, a place dedicated to the glory of God. That's all he wanted. And actually, the building, he wanted to sit back further, so it wasn't a mark or to Charis Bible College. So we were impressed with that. So that was our approach as far as site location, uh, as far as the, uh, the buildings and such. Um, the parking lot locations were also very critical too, to be harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood. Probably ninety-eight percent of the parking is to the west and to the north away from, uh, the surrounding neighborhoods and backed into the land where it is fairly concealed. So, um, on the site plan, which you will see when it comes up during Kyle's presentation, you'll see the parking lot location. I don't have that on the slides right here. But we have, um, pulled the parking, uh, back away, uh, like I said, to the north and to the west. Uh, all the parking on the drive, of course, complies with the dark sky ordinances. Uh, the parking lots are on timers also to shut off, uh, just a certain period of time after the activities are over in the evening. And, uh, we have also done, uh, some landscaping, uh, around the building itself to make it actually really harmonious and attractive within the neighborhood. But also, we have some, it's not so much birmingham, but we have worked with the contours of the land where any headlights, as we're traveling around, such as on the fire loop or in the parking, the headlights are concealed where they do not shine into any of the neighborhoods or, or into any outlying areas. So we've been very, uh, cognizant of trying to keep the impact at a minimum as far as on, on the site. Um, the materials, as you can see here on the structure, um, you can see various materials. We have heavy timber materials. We have natural stone, not any of this faux stone, but it's natural moss rock to, uh, be indigenous with the land. We have stucco, which is very similar to the actual, the lodge that's on the site right now. And we have, um, um, basically, in a, a composition single roof that is compatible and looks with the aesthetics of the existing facilities and the existing land out there. So that's another thing where we wanna have indigenous, very compatible materials to have a nice Colorado look. Um, the building itself will be phased. Uh, we talked about the entire complexes you see here on the slides coming out, but if I can get the mouse to work here. This, the area here, right here on the left is called the banquet hall and has a large deck here to the, to the south. This will be phase one. And that is, uh, the, the building plans are expected to be done. Basically, we're targeted to June twenty-second to have the building plans, uh, complete. Um, and Kyle can fill you in on the rest as far as on the site. This area here, the, which is the auditorium and plus the call center and offices and such, is gonna be phase two. The plan is to go ahead and start phase one, you know, as soon as possible, but before it's even complete, hopefully toward, in the next year. Maybe phase two can come in concurrently where we can get the entire complex completed. So, uh, that is the hope as far as, as, uh, our, our schedule. Uh, you can see, um, on the west elevation, on the south, on the down sheet side, it is actually somewhat sunken into the contours. One thing we did take into consideration on sight lines and, and working with the neighborhoods is we tried to take the building and, and drop it down within the elevations as much as possible. So we do have, uh, some areas here, as you can see. Get the mouse work again. This is pretty much a single story, uh, quite a bit of the ways. And it, it does have some two-story areas along here, but we did drop that down as far as, you know, working with the contours of the land and the surrounding areas. Um, the next slide. These are a few shots of the, and of the interior. The large one, of course, is the auditorium. It's a twenty-five-hundred-seat auditorium. Um, the other ones are the, uh, some pictures of the, uh, concourse, upper level and lower concourse. And we don't have anything of the banquet hall at this time to show you, but these will just show you a, a feel for what some of the interior materials is also. It's gonna be stone, once again, a lot of timber and such, stay within the indigenous. Um, that's really, uh, my presentation on the building. And if there are any other questions, I'll turn it over to Kyle at this time.
Any questions, um, counsel? Yes, Carol.
Brian, is that right?
I'm Brett.
Brett. Um, are you gonna discuss the other, uh, buildings as well? Or someone else going to do that from your team?
I can discuss those if you'd like.
Uh, well, first, a couple of questions about the banquet hall. Will there be a cafeteria for students? Uh, on the campus?
It's not a cafeteria as such on the upper level concourse. There will be areas for, kinda, I wanna say it's like a, it's kind of a cafeteria, a large break area, where it won't be a full-blown cafeteria functioning for the students, but will be enough for them to eat and, uh, to carry on, you know, you know, during, in break periods within, you know, the classes.
As long as we're talking about phase one's structure, the, the banquet hall, how many parking places will be associated with that?
I believe we have five hundred and twenty-six. Uh, I think it's, I think it's five hundred and twenty, five hundred and twenty-six stalls.
Are you gonna talk about an amphitheater tonight and what phase that would be built in?
Yes, I can. The amphitheater, which is, um, right now, there's an existing pavilion on the site. And, uh, I don't have a picture of that here, but what we are wanting to do, and it'll be just after phase one, is what we're planning on doing, is we're doing a, a small expansion to the, um, pavilion itself with some restrooms and a little bit of storage area. And there will be an amphitheater adjacent to this pavilion. And the seating capacity of somewhere around three hundred and fifty to four hundred within this, within the amphitheater. And the amphitheater will be oriented toward the middle pond, as I call it, uh, with a platform that comes down to the edge of the pond. So it is oriented to the pond and then to the timber and the hills beside, kinda to the south, southeast in a direction. Um, it is totally handicap accessible. That's one thing we are doing. It's coming in some parking behind with a fire lane. And we have, um, some, uh, some, I wanna say, kinda pavilion look at the top where we have handicap accessible seats at the top and at the bottom. We're making the pavilion itself accessible, to the restrooms accessible, and even from the restrooms down to the platform to present from is accessible. So it will be one hundred percent accessible.
And with amphitheater, what type of sound system will you have?
It will be a temporary sound system, uh, one that is just extremely focal or local just for this, for that presence right there. So it'll be a very acute directional sound system. Using linear rate-type speakers, but it's, it's a very directional, very, you know, concise sound system.
And at what phase will you begin the student residence buildings?
That is something I can't really tell you, um, exactly when I'll start. I don't have the answer for that to start. There will be a study to see what the demand is. Actually, it's gonna respond to the demand, uh, for the students. From our understanding, there is a pretty good demand for that. So we do anticipate, uh, a fair amount of activity in the student housing, but we have to officially launch that and see what the demand is from the students.
And in terms of other structures associated with the campus, um, is there still consideration for, um, publication distribution center?
Um, I believe, uh, no, there is not.
That's all I have right now. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Bob?
Um, my reading through all of this, uh, basically, the only place I saw kinda the end, uh, condition in twenty thirty-five was, uh, a projected build-out of, to possibly have a three thousand students by twenty thirty-five. Uh, and that was in the traffic study. Uh, but this first phase only deals with, what, what's the capacity of students in this first and second phases?
The capacity of students, we anticipated on the first phase, and we went as around eleven hundred, uh, to about thirteen hundred students as far as capacity.
So this particular document is only, uh, these documents only are related to that loading, uh, and facilities to accommodate that number of students. It would be a subsequent, uh, document that would, would have to come to increase from thirteen hundred to whatever, to three thousand, whereas, does this cover all the expansions?
I'm, I'm not sure if I'm qualified to answer that question. I'll, that's, as far as, I'm sorry. As far as on the, I, I don't understand, on the document itself, does it address that's the max build-out as far as your question? Yes. Yes.
Does, these documents cover the max build-out?
Yes, they should. From what I understand, the documents do cover the max build-out, yes.
Good.
And, and, and I think, Sally, correct me if I'm wrong, but just to make sure. I mean, in us looking at the zoning tonight, that's really our, our, should be our counsel's last, um, role in this, correct Sally? I guess there could be something, but...
That would be correct unless there is an amendment to the PUD. If they were to modify their buildings or location of the buildings, then they would have to come back and, and amend the, the documents.
Gary?
Uh, it's, uh, you mentioned that auditorium was seating twenty-five-hundred people?
Yes, sir.
And you said you had a parking space for five hundred and twenty-five cars?
Yes, sir.
What do you do if you have a full auditorium? Where do you put everybody?
Actually, that is, by zoning, that complies with the twenty-five-hundred people. That ordinance does apply for that max. And if there is any overflow, you know, there is a little bit of parking back at the, at the lodge area. I don't know.
And you said, on the outset, around twenty, twenty-three-five, you're gonna have potentially three thousand students? That's probably not a question of views, probably more of a question for...
So the question is...
About three thousand students by twenty thirty-five?
Uh, yes, sir.
We're a town of about seventy-five-hundred people. That's a pretty significant increase in population in town. So, might wanna take a look at the impact of that.
Um, John?
Our phases one and two, under the guidance of a single general contractor?
Yes, sir.
Are there opportunities or will there be for Woodland Park labor pool to satisfy some of these, uh, required positions?
That is planned.
Do you have any idea how many?
I have somebody else who might wanna guess. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Gary Erickson, the general contractor located at thirteen five seven zero Metalgrass Place. Um, very into the local, uh, business here. Uh, the first, uh, can you hear me? Am I coming through? The first thing we did to, uh, support the community was hire our project superintendent, who has been a, um, resident of Woodland Park for over forty-three years. Um, we're excited about him. We brought him on just because of his relationships with the people in Woodland Park to be able to maximize our ability to use the local team here. So, um, he is in process of meeting with excavators and everyone that he knows with his local, um, forty-three years of living here. So yes, to answer your question, very much involved in hiring the local community.
All right. You haven't addressed my question of how many individuals might we be talking about?
As far as total labor force to build the whole structure?
Yeah. Places for Woodland Park construction workers to compete.
Can you say that a little louder, sir? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm interested in how many employees will you be drawing from the Woodland Park labor pool?
As many as we possibly can. I don't know the total ability of the Woodland Park, um, labor force, so that's why we've hired the local forty-three-year-old veteran to find out who's here and who's capable of doing it. And, uh, we will hire as many as we possibly can. I can't give you a number because I don't know.
All right.
Um, Carol had another question.
It's probably a question for, uh, Mr. Bozeman. It's hours of operation, uh, and in phase one, once, uh, uh, the actual, uh, school is open, you'll operate Monday through Friday, correct?
I'm sorry, Carol. I didn't understand everything that you asked.
The, the school itself will operate Monday through Friday?
Uh, that is correct. It'll operate Monday through Friday. Uh, basically, the daytime hours of operation is eight to noon. And we do have night classes that run from six-thirty to nine-thirty.
So after nine-thirty, generally speaking, unless there's a special event, there will be nothing going on in the campus?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Terry?
Well, and Eric's not here, so darn it. Uh, but your traffic study, uh, came, came through and what, what did it actually show about amount of trips at the intersection? I know that you'll be, uh, under CDOT's rule and, and have to comply with all of them. But overall, what do you think, I mean, just in general, over the next five years? Because the whole, entire project's not gonna be built, and the build-out's two thousand and thirty-five. But say, five years now, what do you think the traffic, what, what's your traffic study?
This is Chris McGrannahan with LSC, uh, Transportation Consultants. And he has done all the legwork and is the expert in that, so I'll let him address that.
Good evening. Chris McGrannahan, LSC Transportation Consultants, five sixteen North Tejon Street, Colorado Springs. We have been working on the project for a couple of years. We're happy to say that in the last, in this past April, a month or two ago, we received the access permit from CDOT. So we have an access permit that's good for up to three thousand students, a call center, uh, the, um, auditorium, and up to five hundred student apartment, five apartments for up to five hundred students on the site. So the, to answer the question about the traffic, um, at full build-out, we're looking at four to five thousand vehicle trips per day. You divide that by two to get the actual number of cars, 'cause the car coming and then leaving is actually two trips. So you're looking at two thousand to twenty-five hundred cars on a busy weekday at full build-out. And so one of the requirements we have from CDOT is to add some, add a lane and do some signal improvements at the traffic signal on twenty-four. So, and that, that access permit is actually to do the full three thousand students. So we don't have to keep going back to CDOT if we do an expansion to get from what it is now to the future. But it's worth pointing out that, you know, eleven to twelve hundred, thirteen hundred students in the near term is, you know, it'd be a third of that. So it'll be, it'll be a, a slow build to that four or five thousand vehicles.
When do you plan on, on, um, doing the, uh, go ahead and getting the traffic mitigation done now? And doing the intersection?
Yeah, the permit from CDOT is good for one year, and we get two one-year extensions. So we have three years to do it, but I think the intention is, is to build it along with the project, because we won't be able to, CDOT won't allow us to actually use the access to twenty-four without the improvements being in place. They do allow, you know, construction permitting and things like that to just get things started, but there, there wouldn't be any occupancy. They wouldn't allow occupancy, and I'm sure that the city wouldn't either without those improvements being in place.
And, and, you know, and, and we wanna make this clear, because a lot of people don't understand this. This isn't CDOT or tax money paying for this. This is the developer in Womack Ministry that has to pay to build this.
Correct.
Per CDOT specifications. And, and most people really don't understand that.
Correct.
Uh, so, thank you.
Yes, Gary. I mean, Bob, I'm sorry.
Along the lines of what John was, uh, asking, as far as local benefits for manpower or what it, workforce, um, on, in this report here, section one, purpose statement, uh, you do talk about the, the, uh, benefits economically for the community. Uh, and it says, "The economic importance of this project will include increased taxes, which includes tax increases for local services such as retail, et cetera." Don't you mean increased tax revenues?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 'Cause I don't think we like tax increases.
Right.
We like revenues.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and I think, a question for myself. Um, one of the things that I've looked at on all these is, and we've discussed some of that, is the various impacts. And, and I know it's, it's document, it's in the documentation, but I'd like to hear if we could from Kip perhaps a little bit, uh, for the record tonight on, on a potential impact for, uh, water and sewer.
Okay. Um, water-wise, that total build-out, they will use approximately, um, two point three percent of our total water, planned water. Um, for, for sewer, they, it's, uh, it's a little kinda different scenario. Um, plant has, uh, our water treatment plant has, um, our wastewater treatment plant, excuse me, um, is due for an upgrade anyways. Um, it'll increase our hydraulic flow by five percent. Making, the, the plant's rated right around a million gallons a day. It's operating at about, uh, half a million right now. Um, there's plenty of hydraulic capacity. It's just the organic loading that we're scheduled to do a, uh, upgrade anyways. Have I answered your questions?
Yeah, I just, I'm just wanting to ensure, you know, through the discussions tonight that, um, that there's not gonna be, uh, an increase, or if there were to be an increase, that we know what that is, uh, cost across, um, to the city for water and sewer that will be provided to, uh, the project.
Um, the only, the only other thing I would like to add is probably with water. Right now, we're currently at fifty-five percent total water usage of available water, and this will bump us up two percent to fifty-seven percent of our... and this will bump us up 2% to 57% of our available water.
And the water and sewer infrastructure to support this, the main part of that that belongs to us is in place? Is that correct, or is that gonna, do we have to do anything there? Spend any tax dollars to support that?
No, sir.
Okay? And what they do on their property, they'll be taken care of?
Correct.
Okay?
And Mr. Turley? In addition to that, we're also providing a loop that's going to be an extension of the water lines across the Sturman property and over onto our property, so it does create a loop effect for the city. And that'll be at the cost of the ministry.
Okay. Yes, Terry?
Kip, if I'm correct that Little Star property will, the sewage system will actually hook on to the line that we put in for the hospital several years ago, and come over to the treatment facility from there?
Where they connect, they'll actually flow down to the south side lift station, and then it'll be pumped uphill.
Coming back?
Yes.
And then the, unfortunately, you know, when we build, develop, whatever we do, we create and put your soil, and that drainage will go, that'll go back down Trout Creek Road into Rule Creek, correct?
Terry, you talking about surface drainage? Stormwater drainage? Stormwater drainage, they're required to meet our detention requirements. And all of the surface drainage will stay in the watershed there, which does go down Jenkins Creek, which runs right along Trout Creek Road there. But they do have to, and they are providing detention for their stormwater, stormwater mitigation, stormwater quality.
So would we use, would we be using the two ponds that are there for part of that?
No.
Or will create an additional stormwater retention?
There's a separate detention facility and pond that they're proposing to build, and their engineer can explain it in more detail if you desire. But the existing ponds will stay basically intact.
And so, and as it releases, it's going to go down Pine Creek? Back down Trout Creek? So it would be running to the northwest?
Correct.
And then that connects with Rule Creek and goes on to the South Platte River?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Well, actually, this is to David and Sally. Will some of these questions be addressed when you go through the staff analysis?
I believe so. And that's why sometimes it's beneficial to hear all the presentations, unless you have clarification questions on specific statements they make, sometimes it's best to wait till the end to ask the general format types of questions.
I can do that.
I can too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, John?
I'm going to ask another labor question then.
Okay.
And this is under identified economic development opportunities. There's a statement made about an increase in the number of new jobs of 66. My question is, how many new jobs is that going to be for Woodland Park personnel? Are you bringing people from Colorado Springs up here to fill some of those 66 jobs?
Well, you know, again, I think, as Brett may have addressed a while ago, you know, or Gary, it depends on the qualifications of the individuals meeting the job requirements. And certainly, if, you know, if Woodland Park residents meet those qualifications, then, you know, we'll be looking at hiring as many of them as are qualified. It's hard to say without looking at the individuals. It's possible that some folks could come from Colorado Springs, or from Divide, or other locations to fill some of those jobs. I can't, you know, I can't really qualify that at this point.
All right, thank you.
But, you know, it's our intention to be a good neighbor, be a good community citizen, and, you know, enhance the community with as many jobs for residents as we possibly can.
All right.
And this is Kyle Campbell, he's our civil engineer. And if nobody has any other general questions at this time, I'll let Kyle make a presentation.
Good evening, Kyle Campbell with Classic Consulting Engineers and Surveyors, 6385 Corporate Drive, Colorado Springs. A lot of the questions that have been asked, I'm going to walk through a number of slides, including the development plan, walk through the overall site, the layout, building locations, and the utilities and drainage. And so I'll try to be brief as I go through these slides, but I'm hoping that by the time I get through this presentation, it will either reaffirm the answers that were given, you know, and answer to the questions that we had previously, or maybe help to answer some questions that you've got in the back of your mind right now. This initial slide that we have is purely a location map to show that the shaded area is the total acreage that Womack Ministries currently owns, with Highway 24 off on this side here, and then Trout Creek Road along with the northerly boundary in this location here. Another point of interest on this particular map is Innovation Way, which is essentially an access point to the Sturman Industries project is located off of Trout Creek Road in this location here. I'll be referencing that on the utility map as we talk about the overall water system that's being proposed for the overall project and our coordination with Sturman Industries as far as completing that loop. The final development plan is obviously a very key document in everything that's moving forward on this proposed project. And so I think it's important to walk through. The document itself, we'll skip over a few of the more pages that have details and things like that on them, but I think it's important that everyone understands, like I said, building locations and how the site's being treated, and the sensitivity that's been used on the layout for this particular project. This is the cover sheet for the overall development plan. Really gets into the lot coverage, the open space, the areas that are being undisturbed, the parking ratios. We are providing 544 parking spaces on the site, and that includes an internal parking garage that's inside the Phase Two portion of the building. And so we do have 544 dedicated parking stalls, just to clarify that, the previous number that was mentioned. In order to get a little bit more of a close-up on the overall site itself, I'm going to go ahead and go, I'm going to skip over a couple of the detail sheets and go to a little bit larger scale drawing of the main portion of the project. One of the areas that was of real focus for us as we got involved in the project was the access road off of Trout Creek Road. There's obviously a lot of topography on the site, a lot of vegetation, and our goal was to come up with a roadway alignment in order to get access back to the Caris Bible College itself, as well as the other uses on the property. What I'd like to go ahead and point out on this particular plan here is the access road here, and I'll be, I'll skip to the second page here in just a moment to talk about the actual access itself. But we have this private road access that comes along this portion of the site here. The Caris Bible School sits in this location. As Brett explained, from a plan view standpoint, this area right here is the Phase One portion of the building that's being proposed. And then the Phase Two auditorium is this area that's off towards the northeast portion of the project. You can see that the predominant parking areas that are being provided are on the north side of the Phase Two area, off towards, and then off towards the east side along through here, with some parking along the west portion of the project in this location here. The other buildings and the other facilities that are going to be on the project, we'll start with some of the simple ones, then we'll go through. The existing barn, that's very visible as you drive by Highway 24, it's sort of perched on top of the hill. That barn is being proposed to be relocated and made into a maintenance facility that will be located along the west side of the building here. It will be architecturally renovated in order to match the architectural vernacular that Brett described as far as the timbers and the stucco and things like that, so it'll fit in very well with the overall project. We've got the Caris Bible College that we already talked about. Then we get into the pavilion area that's located here, and then the amphitheater that's located in this location here. The access road into the overall site includes this access road down into the pavilion and to the amphitheater area. And as Brett explained, we provided ample handicap parking along that area for those two particular facilities, as well as pedestrian routing through the project in order to get from the Caris Bible School down to the pavilion and to the amphitheater itself. To the north of this, we've got the student housing area, what we're calling the north student housing area in this location, and then sort of the south student housing area down here. We've got the future administrative building that sits in this location here. Directly to the west of the administrative building is the proposed detention facility, and I'll go back and I'll address that on a future slide as far as the location of that and the benefits of that particular facility with the overall development. The entrance off of Trout Creek Road, here's existing Trout Creek Road along and through here. A gatehouse is being provided with a median divided entrance off of Trout Creek Road with a roundabout. So if folks come into the property and realize this is not the property that they want to actually be at, this roundabout is being provided. It provides turning movements for both fire trucks and for semis. And so anyone that winds up in this location and decides this is not where they want to be at, they can easily turn around before entering through the gate into the rest of the property itself. As Chris McGrannahan with LSC notated, we are doing improvements on Trout Creek Road. Those are represented down in this corner here on the overall development plan. We are adding additional turn lanes, a dedicated left turn lane, and then a through right, as well as the signal modifications. And those improvements actually carry back on Trout Creek Road for quite a distance in order to provide both the transition and the stacking for the turning movements that have been projected for that particular intersection. So all of that is being constructed and is being proposed to be constructed with the infrastructure for Phase One. And as earlier stated, will need to be installed as a part of the Phase One development. As we get into the overall grading, I want to talk about the access road itself. There was a lot of scrutiny and a lot of time being spent on what this access road wanted to look like. Not only how do we get vehicular traffic in and out of the project, but how do we handle pedestrians? Because there will be a fair amount of pedestrian activity, you know, going back and forth. There'll be an informal trail network on the property. And so the roadway section that was proposed, and what we're moving forward with, is essentially two paved asphalt lanes with an additional gravel lane on one side. And what benefit that provides is during those intermittent special events that take place, it allows a full three lanes to be able to be utilized for incoming and outgoing traffic. And so if there is an event in the auditorium, we can have two lanes of traffic going in, and once that event is over, you can have two lanes of traffic going out. During normal, say, the 99% of the activity on the site, it also provides emergency access coverage. If there would be something that would happen that would close down the asphalt roadway itself, they've got a compacted gravel roadway base off to the side that could allow fire trucks and emergency vehicles to enter the site. The circulation around the property was also a key component in being able to bring both students and visitors into the project, bringing them up to the front door, which, once Phase Two is constructed of the Caris Bible College, the front door will move from this location here to this location here. And it provides one-way circulation in and out. And that will certainly help with the inflow and outflow of traffic, and the whole goal is to minimize the amount of conflicting traffic movements on site to be able to get traffic in and out of the project as quickly as we could. This particular plan shows the grading that's being proposed. And as Brett indicated, the Caris Bible College has three different levels in order to acknowledge the topography that the site, the building, sits on. And so there's a lower walkout level, there's a main level, and then an upper level on the second floor of the auditorium to try to fit better into the overall topography of how the site sits out there. This plan also reflects that the limited parking that is provided on the west part of the property is actually depressed. And so any cars maneuvering in this area or parking in these parking stalls, any of their headlights and the visibility will be blocked by the slope and the vegetation that's going to be provided around that corner from the adjacent residential uses. That was very intentional in order to provide some of that additional buffer that was desired by the neighbors. The other item I'd like to note is there are four historic bunk houses that are referenced in the documents, and those four bunk houses, which are reflected in this area of the project here, are all being maintained and preserved. And then there's also an existing cabin that's currently occupied by the maintenance personnel that are out there, and that'll continue to be utilized. The lodge, what we refer to as the lodge, which was built by the Sturmans, sits in this location here, and that particular use will continue to be utilized. Roach control, I won't get into details on that, but we'll be in full compliance. I mean, obviously, the goal is to, we've got some very significant and beneficial natural features through the site, both this tributary corridor here and along Trout Creek Road. And the best way to preserve those and the vegetation is to keep all the construction activity and the sediment, you know, controlled on site. And so that's our, that's our focus as we move forward. I'm going to skip over a few more of these. We're getting into some of the utilities, and I've got some colored utility maps in the back that I think will be a little bit easier for everyone to see what's taking place. This is the entrance with the turning maneuvering for the semi and the fire trucks in and out of the project along and through here, as described earlier. And then I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about the construction timeline. The development plan does notate on the plan what the anticipated construction timeline is for the various phases, but I thought it'd be a good idea to go ahead and sort of formalize it and put it into a table. You know, please keep in mind that this is the timeline that the design team is moving forward with, fundraising, demand. There are other factors that will come into play in actually determining when these facilities will get constructed. But this is how we're moving forward with the project at this particular time. You can see that the years above notated on the top line with the Phase One portion up here for the Caris Bible College here. And I apologize, I'm going to have to break out my glasses, I can't even read that screen across there.
Sally, are those timelines in the package?
Yeah, they're actually on the plan itself. They're inside the development plan, and is it included somewhere else? Oh, it's in the narrative? In the narrative portion.
Thank you.
What we were trying to do is sort of pull it out of all the text and put it into something that would be a little bit easier to understand. And now that I can read it, I can explain it a little bit better. In 2012 and 2013, that site infrastructure that we described, so the main access road, the sanitary, the water, the drainage, the detention, the improvements to Trout Creek Road, the signal modifications, the grading for everything that you see associated with what was on that prior plan will all take place. And so there is no proposal to phase any of that critical infrastructure that's needed in order to service the Phase One Bible College. And then you can see also in that 2012 to 2013 timeframe is the Phase One Caris Bible College itself, starting to slip into 2013 and 2014 as it relates to the student housing. Once again, dependent upon demand. We're showing completion of 150 units in 2013, then potentially another 150 units in 2014. And then 2015 to 2016, we get into the Phase Two portion of the Bible College. And then 2017 to 2018 is the administration building. Some of the additional structures, the pavilion, the amphitheater, things like that, those will be, you know, determined, once again, as funding is available, as demand is needed and things like that. We wanted to purely focus this on the major portions of the infrastructure, the major buildings that would be on the project. Just to briefly discuss drainage, because I can easily put you all to sleep talking about drainage for hours and hours, and I promise I won't do that. This is the existing conditions, and so one of our goals, working with Bill, was to be able to prove how the drainage proposal that we were putting together for this project would not be detrimental to anybody downstream. And so historically, with the basins that have been provided, we had to analyze some pretty key points along this drainage tributary here and the one adjacent to Trout Creek Road. And so based upon that historical analysis, we were then able to come back with proposed recommendations for the overall site. One of the unique things that we were able to do on this particular project is some of the earlier concepts, we're trying to utilize the actual drainage corridor themselves and the existing ponds that were out there for detention. As we further evaluated it, looking at the uniqueness of those facilities, the aesthetics of those facilities, and as well as some of the regulatory issues associated with those facilities, it made more sense to come back and look at centralizing the full-spectrum detention and the stormwater quality. Based upon the grading and our approach to the site, we're able to take the entire Caris Bible College area here itself, the roadway portions along and through here, this future residential housing area here, the administration building, and actually get them into one centralized facility. And so what that does, instead of having scattered stormwater quality in detention facilities throughout the site, we've been able to get it focused into one central location with then one outfall into the drainage corridor. And so by providing that full-spectrum detention, we've actually gone above and beyond what Woodland Park requires from a drainage standpoint. We felt it was the right thing to do, to be basically extra sensitive with these drainage corridors, with the wetlands and the vegetation and everything else that we find of value in those drainage corridors. And with this drainage plan, and we do have our drainage report currently approved, we were able to meet all of those goals that Woodland Park required for us to take a look at. The water system, to say that the water system was challenging is an understatement. The water system, to say that the water system was challenging is an understatement. The existing infrastructure in this particular area, especially those of you familiar with the dead-end water main that currently services the hospital, proved to be a very daunting task for us. Because we had to prove, you know, working with city staff, that with the infrastructure, the water infrastructure that was being proposed for this particular site, that we could not only handle and provide fire flows and domestic flows for our particular property, but we also had to show that we were not detrimentally impacting the flows and domestic availability down at the hospital itself. Knowing that the hospital currently has its own challenges associated with the water system, we've gone through and modeled a system. And the proposed system is a combination of eight- and 10-inch water mains. Close to 7,000 lineal feet of onsite and offsite water mains are needed to be extended in order to service this property and meet all those fire flow requirements. And so, this is where the conversations that we've had with Sturman Industries have come in, because they have a dead-end water system up in their property, another dead-end water system running on Highway 24. And so, we've been able to come back with a system that connects both of those systems together and effectively minimizes the dead-end water system that the hospital now has facing them. I'm not standing here to say that we've eliminated it, because we can't go that far offsite to fix that. But we've really been able to go in and connect the system and prove through modeling that we're not affecting their supply. We're providing the supply that we need, and we're providing that additional water circulation and reliability and redundancy for the overall water system for this area that will be of community benefit for everyone. Like I said, it was not an easy task. It comes with a very significant price tag with the lineal footage of water main that's needed. But I stand in front of you as the engineer who helped to prepare it, and I'm very confident that we're going to have a water system that's going to be very reliable, serve the needs of our project, and also be beneficial for the rest of the systems that are out there. The other component of the site is the preliminary plat, the other item, one of the other items that you'll be considering this evening. This is essentially a preliminary survey document. And two things I want to note on this particular document is several easements are being proposed and will be dedicated along the westerly and southerly boundary in order to accomplish additional potential utility connections with Westwood Lakes, if they are so desired. So, working with that particular district, we've been able to set aside and are going to be dedicating those easements for their use in the future if needed. And then, a very, very interesting item that came up as we were working on our design is that portions of Trout Creek Road are actually sitting inside the Womack property itself. And so, while not that uncommon, as we found it, this particular document now reflects dedicating additional right-of-way along through that corridor to both accommodate the existing roadway, the roadway expansion, as well as the trail that we'll be installing along the southerly section of Trout Creek Road down to the intersection. So, all of that will be in public right-of-way and dedicated with the final plat as that moves forward. That is the end of my presentation. If you have any technical questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them now or we can wait till after Sally's presentation.
Looks like we're going to wait and hear Sally's presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll return to PowerPoint. And if you would like to follow along with me, I'm going to start on page three of the staff report and walk you through the compliance with the code. And we will begin with the purpose of a PUD. And this plan, planning and design of the proposed mixed-use development as a PUD zone will benefit both the community and the applicant with more flexibility, latitude, and a creative design approach through a variety of principal and accessory uses and the preservation of significant open space. Next section deals with where a district may be established. And with the staff analysis, the Womack's property is held in common ownership and under unified control. All provisions of the PUD chapter have been met. An acceptable relationship to the major traffic thoroughfare plan does exist and is verified by the traffic analysis that was done last year by LSC and Chris McAnahan. CDOT and the city have reviewed LSC's study and agree with their conclusions that all vehicular movements at the analyzed intersections are projected to operate at acceptable levels of service. Furthermore, the proposal has an acceptable relationship to the city's land use plan. The comprehensive plan map identifies this area as mixed-use, which is compatible with a PUD, PBD zone, and the proposed project. Number five, the PUD will not over-capacitate our utility lines as verified by a comprehensive water and wastewater analysis. And the city's wastewater and water services have the capacity to serve this project as proposed. Also, the other utility, dry utility providers have been contacted, and they too have the capacity to serve this project. Under the requirements for approval, there are four areas or conditions. This proposal directly meets condition number C in which the property is adjacent to the Sturman's PUD. That's shown on the zoning map. And so, it meets that condition. But secondarily, it also meets condition A, which is done through preserving physical features, such as the floodplain, the three ponds, wetlands, and forested areas with 116 acres of undisturbed topography. You also heard that the cabins, bunkhouses, will be preserved and the one cabin. So, it also comes with the preservation of the historic character of the site, which is condition B. Condition D is also met in that it is a unique urban design that relates to the adjoining properties and includes a well-designed buildings, 100-foot buffer, no build buffer, adjacent to Westwood Lake subdivision. They're providing for full cutoff light fixtures and also being sensitive toward noise reduction, traffic impacts, open space, and wildlife protection. In section 1830030, this is the section that deals with the planned business development. I am now on page five of your staff report. The staff analysis, we maintain that the environmental integrity is preserved with the ponds, floodplains, and other environmental sensitive areas on the site with 80% or 116 acres of the property remaining undeveloped. A Phase One environmental assessment has been completed and has determined... It evaluates whether any recognized environmental conditions exist within the study area that could include potential impacts on the surrounding properties. The recognized environmental conditions are the presence or likely presence of any hazardous substances or petroleum products on the property. And their conclusions or findings state that no environmental areas of concern were identified in the study area boundary. Under section E2, this deals with the compatibility with the vicinity properties. And the staff analysis identifies that the project is compatible with the existing and proposed uses through good design and mitigating impacts. And I'd like to explain some of those mitigating approaches. First, with the architecture, as was described by Brent, it represents a lodge style complementary with Woodland Park's mountain landscaping. The campus buildings will use earth-toned colors and materials, including moss rock, peeled logs, wood components, and stucco. The design characteristics were purposely selected to help mitigate these impacts. With respect to setbacks and heights, I mentioned the 100-foot no-build buffer that will be adjacent to the Westwood Lake subdivision. There is also a 25-foot setback around the entire perimeter of the site. The maximum building height is 60 feet. That would be for the administrative building. That's located toward the interior of the site. And the main building has a 54-foot height that's measured by mean grade, which is partially built into the hillside to take advantage of the slopes. No views of Pike's Peak from the existing residence will be affected by the heights of any of the proposed buildings. Mentioned the exterior lighting. I photometric's plan and lighting fixture specifications do meet the dark sky standards with full cutoff shields. And also, you've heard that the grading plan helps to mitigate the potential of headlights on the west side of the building. With respect to noise, most of the activities are contained within enclosed buildings, with the classroom, the auditorium, office, banquet hall, call center, and parking garage. Vehicular noise will be reduced due to the posted low speeds to the primary parking area on the east side or interior side of the main building. The outdoor pavilion and amphitheater is located in a natural bowl toward the center of the property and is buffered with a thick stand of spruce trees between the pavilion and the Westwood Lakes neighborhood. The student housing is also located a significant distance away from the Westwood Lakes subdivision. Traffic and access, you have heard from LSC that improvements will be made to Trout Creek Road intersection. And the adjacent streets will be able to handle the projected build-out. The new private road is designed with an optimal-use gravel lane to accommodate increased traffic during special events or emergency evacuations. The applicant is required to prohibit access with locked gates from any portion of Westwood Lakes, except that there will be emergency access off of Vista Lane if it should need to be ever used. With respect to drainage, Kyle reviewed the sensitivity to the drainage plan. And that system is designed to carry the runoff into the main detention facility, which will detain and release the runoff at or below historic rates. They will also include low-impact development techniques that will help increase or enhance the water quality measures to protect groundwater. The wastewater and water capacity was just verified by KIP and with a memo from our former utilities director that confirmed that the city does have the capacity to serve the project. As well, the looping is a key part of being able to provide for fire flow and looping system that will also help serve the hospital. With respect to fire protection, all the buildings will be constructed in accordance with the 2003 International Fire Code. An adequate fire protection with the waterline looping, the number and spacing of fire hydrants will be provided and reviewed by the fire district. The applicant is also required to prepare a wildfire protection plan that will identify a thinning program and other measures. And that will begin to be implemented over a period of time. With respect to wildlife, the Division of Wildlife and Parks did take a look at the plan. They made three recommendations. Womack is able to meet two out of the three. The first recommendation was regarding interior fencing and keeping it to a minimum or preferably nonexistent. The applicant is planning to adhere to this recommendation. No fencing is proposed around the site. They also were concerned about the elk calving in critical habitat areas and recommended that no outside construction would occur between May 15th and June 30th. I think that will take place this year because they are still in the process of preparing their construction drawings so that elk calving season will be in good shape. But that is difficult to adhere to due to our short construction season. Lastly, the Wildlife Division asked for some sensitivity between conflicts that may arise between bears and humans and asked that all the garbage be contained in bear-proof containers. The applicant is planning on agreeing to that. With respect to item number three, this is the economic development opportunities associated with the project. A study was completed and is contained in your packet. There is a representative here this evening if you have more questions about the economic benefits. There is an increased projection for sales and use tax revenues in 2014 of a little bit over $122,000. The increased number of jobs that Councilman Schaefer mentioned is 66 jobs in the first year with a payroll of $2.6 million. The overall construction expenditures are planned to be in the neighborhood of $86 million. Once it is constructed, the operating and maintenance expenditures of the project are planned to be $1.6 million for the first year. With respect to property tax collection revenue, the privatization of the student housing is projected to generate about $3.48 million over the 11-year period in the projected study. And this was an important aspect for the Planning Commission. They added condition number 14 to the final development plan conditions to ensure that the student housing remain as private. And the applicant agreed to that at that time. The not-so-easily quantifiable benefits include helping to diversify the local economy with the introduction of higher education industry that is a year-round operation. And also, the fact that many new visitors will be coming to Woodland Park to their events and the number of students that will be living here temporarily. Now, we can move on to the final plan requirements for approval. The project meets the requirements of acceptable land planning practice and promotes public health, safety, and welfare through good site design and planning and aesthetically pleasing buildings. The development has addressed the traffic impacts by constructing onsite and offsite improvements to facilitate the flow of vehicles. The development plan conserves surrounding property values as an educational, religious institution that has quality design and architecture. It protects against fire or other hazards by meeting the 2003 International Code, local fire protection standards, drainage and flood control specifications, and provides an emergency access and widened main access drive for evacuation. Continuing on in... We are now on page eight. These are items 1 through 15. Our items, they're elements that are required to be part of the plan. The applicant has submitted a very detailed development plan as well as a narrative that explains... as well as a narrative that explains each section in a very excellent way. So they have complied with the final plan approvals in section B. Moving on to the bottom of page nine, the common open space requirements for a PUD. This area, it's based on the gross area of the property. And for a property that falls between a hundred and two hundred acres, there's a requirement for thirty-five percent of the property to be designated as common open space. There is a total of sixty-two point three six acres or forty-two percent of the site that meets the definition of common open space. This will remain private, which is perfectly acceptable in a PUD. With respect to the dimensional standards in a PUD, it there are no permanent dwelling units or residential lots proposed on this site. Rather, there will be three hundred units for student housing. Those will be group quarters. They don't count toward our population. The Census Bureau looks at student housing as group quarters and counts that population as a separate line item. So it is not considered as permanent housing. And they will be designed to be in harmony with the surrounding area and intent and purpose of this chapter. The three hundred units is in line with the maximum density of two units per acre on the hundred and forty-seven acre tract, although once again, these are not permanent housing units. The percentage of lot coverage by the buildings and structures and impervious surface is approximately fourteen point eight percent. That's appropriate for college campus with student housing, administration buildings, and accessory uses. The maximum height of the buildings and structures are appropriate since the heights of the various buildings are not excessive and do not inhibit views. The minimum lot frontage does not apply because this tract will remain as a single large lot and has adequate frontage on both Highway twenty-four and Trout Creek Road. The front, side, and rear setbacks do not apply. However, I've already mentioned the setbacks with respect to the buffer with, adjacent to Westwood Lakes and the twenty-five foot setback around the remaining portion of the property. Parking, our parking code does not specifically address college standards. As a result, we look at what is being proposed and evaluate if that is reasonable. We do believe that what is being proposed for both the main campus building and the student housing and the administration building is sufficient. And there is plenty of space on the site for this parking. Landscaping, the applicant has submitted the land, a preliminary landscaping plan that meets the city's design standards for a parking lot and site landscaping. The plan proposes to use hardy native trees, shrubs, grasses adjacent to the buildings, parking lots, and roadways. The plantings have been included and are strategically located to minimize and soften the development from the adjacent property owners. That is the review of all the PUD criteria. Moving on to the conditional use and the special use criteria, I am only going to focus on two of the eleven because most of this criteria was already addressed in the PUD standards. And the first criteria that I would like to focus on is the, that there is a demonstrated direct need to be located at this location. The Cherish Bible College provides a unique educational and religious institution on the western edge of Woodland Park. The sanctuary and its associated uses are situated on a hundred and forty-seven acre tract that has ample land area, serviceability, and design to complement the community's managed growth goals and objectives. There is a demonstrated economic benefit to the development and build out with twenty-five hundred college students and annual conferences. The potential impacts to the environment and the surrounding neighborhood for traffic, drainage, noise, lighting, utilities, fire protection, and wildlife have been already adequately mitigated. I'm going to skip over.
Excuse me, can I make one comment?
Sure.
That twenty-five hundred college students, should that be amended to be three thousand?
Three thousand is what the traffic study is based on. Yes.
And then that still would be compliant?
Yes, it would. I've talked about its harmony with the area, that it conforms with the city plans. I'd like to focus a little more on this area, which is on page thirteen of your staff report. I pulled out a number of goals that are specific in the comprehensive plan that first, beginning with the two guiding principles, to sustain Woodland Park's economic diversity and vitality and to promote opportunities for lifelong learning. It conforms with several of the comp plan's overarching goals, beginning with the land use and growth goal number one, providing opportunities for growth and development while preserving the community and environmental quality. Under community character and design goal number one, it promotes design efforts that enhance Woodland Park's small-town atmosphere and provides present-day conveniences while protecting the mountain environment, wildlife, and scenic beauty that surrounds the community.
Sally, if I could interrupt you.
Yes.
We've got all those and see how it fits. Do we need to actually go through them?
Nope, that would be fine.
I mean, is council comfortable with that? I mean, we've got them. I mean, if, if it fits and it's in the package, it's available to the public and everything, so.
Okay. You know how I like the comprehensive plan, the opportunity to talk about.
There's what, ten, twelve of those that meet the comprehensive plan?
There are, yes. And lastly, in the conditional use among the twelve or eleven criteria, I just wanted to emphasize the architectural design schemes that were proposed for this building will fit nicely into the Woodland Park community. The last area deals with the preliminary plat, which Kyle showed you, that the plat meets the city's standards for health, safety, and welfare of the subdivision's occupants. It will be constructed to meet the current day building codes. It has provided for adequate ingress egress with a three-lane roadway. There's also the emergency access, the wildfire protection plan that is required. The drainage plan and flood study is complete. And provisions for water, sewer, and other public improvements already been discussed. So the preliminary plat is in conformance with the applicable standards of this chapter seventeen point twenty. And as far as the design standards, that too is applicable and complies with that portion of the code. That concludes the review of the sections of the code. I would like to briefly talk about the four recommendations for approval or motions that are needed this evening. With the first motion, that deals directly with the proposed project qualifying for a PUD district and approves the rezoning of the property to PUD and approves the PUD PBD final plan based on the findings and the staff report and the fourteen conditions. Condition one, final landscaping plan. Condition two requires a grading and erosion control plan. Condition three, and I'm seeing heads nod. I don't probably need to go through these unless you would like me to. No?
Nope.
Then, motion number two, whoops, will specifically deal with the ordinance eleven sixty-two to designate this as PUD PBD for the sanctuary. Motion number three is the preliminary plat recommendation. And motion number four, when you get to that stage, will be the amendment to the annexation agreement. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks, Sally. A lot of material, of course, there's been a lot of work done on all this. So just so, to remind with council, the sequence of what we're going to be doing. You can ask questions. I'll open it up for questions from, from you, for the staff and the applicant. As soon as we could, I'd like to roll in the public comment. So you can ask those now. And, and, but I'd like to get the, we've got four people scheduled for public comment. I'd like to hear that as early as I can. So if it rolls into other questions that we might want to ask of the applicant. So we can do, right now, I will, you know, we'll move on to, you can ask questions of the staff and the applicant, and then we'll go to public comment.
I have some brief, brief questions, and I think it'll go fast.
Okay, very good.
We recognize that there will be follow-on phases through two, twenty thirty-five. But we also recognize that once we, as a council, approve this, anything further done on the property would be an administrative review by, by the city staff. That's my understanding. Could you correct me if it's wrong?
I, I, that's a very good question because that does need clarification. Only the areas that were clouded in the administration building or the student housing, as long as those are brought forward as they are described in the final plan, that is an administrative review by the staff. However, if they were to change or add any new facilities onto this site, then that would be a change in character of what has been proposed and will need to go through the planning commission and city council review. So they are locked in to what they have proposed to do based on the materials that are in the packet.
Okay, so to go from twelve hundred students to three thousand, which may require more classrooms, buildings, more student housing, that would come back through the process?
That's the case. If it is the case that they feel their growth demands more facilities than what they have proposed this evening, then it would come back to you for an amendment.
Certainly that clarifies our earlier statement that this would be the last time we, city council saw it.
Yes, as long as they build out as it's proposed.
Yeah, as it's planned.
Okay, that's all I had.
Very good. Others? Yes, Terry.
And it's the parking thing. Sally, how do we, or how did we come up with the amount of parking? And then, I got a question for Larry.
Well, the auditorium was established as one space for every five seats. And it's mainly an operation, understanding the operations. The classrooms that they're proposing will easily handle, be handled with those five hundred spaces, especially because they have different sessions of students that come in the morning, come in the afternoon, and that they probably, they will not be using both the classrooms and the auditorium at the same time. So it's looking at how the operation will work. So we felt very comfortable that five hundred and forty-four spaces was completely adequate for that area. And should they need those kinds of additional, they will look at busing. With students living on campus, they'll do, they'll walk to their classrooms and to the site. So they'll be, we believe that it's fully adequate. You don't want to overpark and create unnecessary large parking lots. So this is a very reasonable approach.
I think what made me ask, ask that question was the average age, as Larry says, is forty-three years old. These aren't creative college students. And we keep calling them that because it's, it's a college. But, I mean, these are adults. They're not as creative as college kids. They can't park between trees near as tight, and, and they actually care about the vehicles they're driving. But, and, and a question for Larry, if, if, is it only the school that's going to be using the auditorium? Or do you plan on having other events there?
Well, for the Andrew Warren Ministries, we do plan to have other events there. We have, we have, I think, three non-school-related events a year currently. One is in, in July, and one is in October. Trying to think when the other one is.
It's, it's really a selfish question because I'm just looking for someplace to graduate our own senior class.
And that was where I was getting to. You know, we've had numerous discussions, and Andrew has, has made the comments that we, you know, are going to make the facility available to compatible uses for the community, such as graduations of the students. In fact, we, we already had a discussion with the administrator of the Colorado Springs Christian Academy that's here. And they, you know, they've expressed a potential interest in that. And any other, you know, like I said, compatible events that the community wishes to hold in that auditorium, we will make that available as well.
So we're not going to close the sanctuary. I mean, we're going to leave it open to the community. We want, we want it to be a community project and people to be proud of it and use it.
You know, the other plan is, you know, we've, we've got this nice amphitheater, which we plan to make available to, to the community and, and have some events out there that can be community-related in the amphitheater as well as in the auditorium.
Yes, Carol.
A question for Sally. On, on page ten of the staff analysis, you talked about student housing or group quarters. Where in our city code do we address student housing and group quarters? How did we come up with that particular data point?
Well, student housing is not directly addressed in our code. The term group quarters is a census definition. The census, US Census Bureau uses that for dormitories, jails, and those types of facilities in order to capture that transient-type resident that is in your community.
But it'd be correct to say that this isn't really going to be a transient situation. Once the student housing is built, the students may come and go, but it'll be occupied a hundred percent of the time.
Correct. They'll have their occupancy based, but it's purely for their students. It is not rental housing for a permanent resident of Woodland Park.
But if they live there for two years, that's still student housing.
Just like when you and I went to college, we were living on campus in the dormitories for a certain number of years. Okay?
This is kind of a big-picture question for you, Sally. Has anybody studied the impact of having three thousand more people here in Woodland Park? Unless they're sequestered on the campus, they're going to be going downtown Woodland Park, I would assume, to shop and to eat. Has anybody studied the impact of that? That's a significant increase of people downtown. Do we have the parking facilities for that?
And, and that's, well, one of the reasons we've added the trails is to be able to tie bicycle facilities in. But that is a problem that we relish to have, that we hope to have.
It's, it's kind of a double-edged sword because, you know, here we, we pride ourselves in being in a small community and a small town. And a lot of people moved here because they wanted to get away from crowded cities. And you like to go to a restaurant and get a seat without waiting two hours. Now, this is going to impact us dramatically. Has anybody looked at that?
The economic development study was looked at, in terms of that, and so I think that...
I can appreciate the fact that it does create more revenue, and it's great, we can bring more restaurants in, maybe we can, you know, get a, a Old Chicago here, or something like that, I don't know, based on that kind of traffic, but, you know, we don't have that right now. If we do nothing else, as far as bringing more restaurants and facilities like that in here, we're going to be overwhelmed.
Remember, this project, it's not going to flip a switch, and there's suddenly going to be three thousand additional people here, and remember, it's a combination of students, staff, and employees of, of the Bible College. So it's going to be over a period of time that we're going to realize that, and we think that the market will adjust to that. There's an expectation there could be some additional housing market within the community outside of the student housing. Is there parking downtown for that? No, not necessarily. But remember that our RE2 school district brings in about two thousand students a day into the system, I think into Woodland Park, it's probably fifteen hundred or sixteen hundred, I'm not sure the, the exact populations of the two elementary schools, the middle school and the high school, but this is somewhat similar to that. These, there's a student timeframe in the morning, and then one in the evening. So it, it's not as if these three thousand people are going to be here full-time, any more than the entire student body of the RE2 school district is within the city limits at the same time. Is it going to have an impact? Absolutely. Is it one that the market will adjust to over time? We think it will.
Well, I would just say, is it going to change the character of the town? I mean, as I said, I came from an area where you literally had to wait three hours to go to a restaurant.
Yeah, and I would hope that the restaurateurs and entrepreneurs in this area would realize that, and, and help us out accordingly.
Other than we're getting away from a small-character town, we've got to change our whole...
And you know, that's, that's what you get to help decide.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Mr. Vervettaro, I was just going to underscore what Mr. Butter had said, you know, all three thousand students in two thousand thirty-five won't be living in Woodland Park, there are some students that are going to be continuing to live in, in Colorado Springs, so that, you know, you won't have three thousand additional residents necessarily in Woodland Park. The other thing I think is worthy of, of note is that, you know, this, this, the school year kind of offsets the tourism period during this, during the, you know, for Woodland Park, you know, when the, when school's in, the tourists are gone, and when the tourists are gone, are here, then school's out, so that'll be an offset as well. And yes, it will have an effect on the complexion of the community.
Yes, Bob.
That brings to mind another benefit. How many of these average thirty, forty-three-year-old students will have dependents going to our local schools? Have you estimated that at all?
Yes, sir, I don't have those numbers with me, and I'm not sure if that was in our economic impact analysis or not, but we did make an estimate of the number of, number of children that'll, that'll be infused into the school system here, and it, it does have the impact, an impact, and the, the school system was, I think, pretty much in favor of that as, as a result.
Those numbers were in the, in the big notebook, I just can't put my fingers on them probably immediately.
Yeah, I got that, I was lost.
It seemed to me that the number of students that could potentially be coming into the school district were less than a hundred. If I did the, the math, seventy-seven percent were going to either live on campus or have student housing, there's, there was a percentage of, that were married, a percentage that had kids, and I just kind of backed into a number that was less than a hundred.
And if I could just add, you know, I don't want to speak for the school district at all, but, you know, the student numbers have, have been declining, and, and that's actually an issue, so I, I believe that, right now, the school district would, would look very favorably upon an increase in some number of students.
That's the point I was trying to make.
Oh, okay.
We need to draw that out, so we could get well on the school budget, too.
Yeah, that could be helpful.
Yes, Carol.
Another staff analysis question, on page six, we talk about the height of the administration offices, and the main building, sixty feet for the administration offices, fifty-four feet for the main building. I, I may be incorrect, but I thought our height requirements were that a, a building would not exceed thirty-five feet.
With a planned unit development, those dimensional standards are proposed by the applicant, and then reviewed by staff, and so there are no height maximums or limits in a PUD. That is one of the advantages, that gives them the flexibility to propose their unique design.
But the heights are evaluated, there's, there, we have to finish that thought. It's just not carte blanche that we approve that, we look at the impact of the heights, does it have an impact on view corridors, et cetera?
Then, another question on the analysis, staff analysis, on page seven, on fire protection, I think it goes without saying that the buildings would be built within international fire code. However, I don't know if fire chief or anyone here could answer the question about the increased population, and our ability, or our response capacity for that increased population.
The chief Tyler is, Chief Lambert's scheduled to come and speak to us during the public comment section.
Okay, I'll, I'll defer then. Thank you.
Any others? Oh, yes, Terry.
Well, and a question along that line, Sally, are we requiring that, that all these structures be sprinkled?
They will be sprinkled, yes.
That's, then, that's commercially required. Does that include the student housing?
Based on the occupancy, I don't believe the student housing, Tyler, needs to be sprinkled.
Yes, Bob.
One final question for me, then, other than perhaps responding to a public comment, is on the architectural drawings, the exterior finishes. There are a number of columns which appear to be peeled logs, but all it says is wood, light, and medium stain. Could we confirm that those columns are, in fact, peeled logs?
They are.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, John.
One of the things that we're interested in here, of course, is the positive financial impact this project's going to have on our community, and that's good. We looked at a schedule earlier this evening that ran through two thousand eighteen, I believe, for the construction process. Is that scheduled in alignment with the economic analysis that was done?
In alignment.
Could you come on up to the microphone, please? Appreciate that, so people can, can hear you, and we'll get it out to everybody that's watching on the television.
Absolutely. I'm Paul Ruschut, I'm a senior partner with Summit Economics, and we prepared the economic analysis for this project. Our analysis went out through the year two thousand twenty-three. It was intended to look at one year of pure construction and ten years of operations. So we did not align it, we did not stop at two thousand eighteen, we did go to two thousand twenty-three, when the student population had grown to around eleven hundred and thirty, something like that.
And that analysis started this year?
It started, the first year was two thousand twelve, and that showed just construction expenditures, and then the first students, I believe, we showed in the year two thousand thirteen.
You showed construction expenses only for one year?
Uh, no, actually, the construction schedule, there is quite a few different numbers for different years. It's in alignment with what you had seen earlier, but we had had approximately fourteen million dollars worth of construction in two thousand twelve, twenty-three million in two thousand thirteen, nine million in two thousand fourteen, twelve million in two thousand fifteen, fourteen million in two thousand sixteen, six millions in two thousand seventeen, four million in two thousand eighteen, and then another three million in two thousand twenty.
And that total is?
Uh, that total, I believe, was the eighty-five million or so.
Eighty-five, eighty-six, yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay.
May I actually have a question?
Okay.
Before you step down to the podium, the, on page seven of the staff analysis, it says that property tax revenue collected on the privatized student housing
Yes.
would be three point four eight million over an eleven-year period.
Yes.
Was that total property tax, or just property tax realized by the city of Woodland Park?
No, that was total, and it also included both the direct and the induced property taxes.
Thank you.
Other questions from council at this point? I, I have some questions, I, I really want to wait until after we have the public comment before I bring those up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else from council at this time, I'll, I'll move into the public comment section. We have four people scheduled, and then I'll also allow additional speakers, if, if people wish to do so. I would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, based upon the number of folks that we have wanting to speak tonight, and, and additional things that we need to cover in this, so try to work it within five minutes. We'll give you a little heads up when you have about a minute left, just so you'll be aware of where we're at on that, and... Anything from staff at this point? In that case, then, we'll move on to the public comment. Open the floor for that. The first person that I have signed up is Amy Velimerovich from Woodland Park. Oh, okay, gotcha.
Hi, my name is Amy Velimerovich, and I live at two thirty-two Elianai in Westwood Lakes. The presentations, all of this was lovely, this picture of what this looks like, lovely. However, when this thing is built out, it's going to be three times the size of Walmart. Two of the buildings have already been proposed to exceed the, the height, the building height that we currently have for this city. Sitting on that beautiful hill, at Bluebird Hill, we're going to put this monster. As far as light mitigation, noise mitigation, all this has been shown, but when you have a facility this large, and for what is proposed of all the people coming and going, with additional, from what I'm hearing tonight, additional events wanting to occur on this property, how is that not going to impact the surrounding neighborhoods, including the traffic congestion, not just at that particular intersection, but all of Woodland Park? I mean, that's a lot of people coming and going. This is supposedly a small-time town community, that will go totally out the window. It causes a strain on existing services, and impacts the reasons that people are drawn to live here. The small community lifestyle will disappear, as the population will increase by over half, with the potential to be twice the population, depending on the venue occurring on that property. I don't agree with the water support studies that, that came up. When this thing is built out, they will have a minimum, they will use a minimum of thirty-three thousand gallons of water a day. Now, all of the, there's been numerous studies for water levels, they show that they're dropping. This additional burden for water will only worsen with the increased demand as the supply diminishes. Woodland Park, according to their site, says that they get their water from the runoff and from wells in the surrounding area. That means a lot of the wells that already exist out there will diminish as the increase for water demand will occur on this property. So the impact to the environment, and something this huge, I don't know how, when you have a, a situation this large, how that's not going to impact the wildlife in that area? I mean, three times the size of Walmart? I mean, come on. You know, this has been lovely, from the beginning, on the decision, from what I have understood, from the very beginning, has been to allow this, this to be built, with a promise of jobs and revenue to this community, and I think this is wishful thinking. Previous presentations have shown that most of the jobs will be coming outside of this community, and not from here. Even the construction jobs that were, were set, matter of fact, this was Womack presenting the, the stats, would be, I believe it was eighty percent of the jobs would be outside of this city, that only twenty percent would come from the surrounding areas. So the light pollution, noise pollution, increased traffic congestion, and destruction of the land that is home to abundant wildlife is a high price to pay for this mega complex that's going to be built there. So it's a, you know, this, this facility is also a self-contained organization, and they are tax-exempt, so that's another piece I just, I just really want to throw out, not to be totally blinded, and as far as what the impact this is going to mean to this environment and community, and I just really think this is going to be a disaster, especially as far as this community and the small-town environment will totally be gone. It gives me cause to want to leave.
Thanks, thanks for your comments, Amy, appreciate that. We'll move on to the second person that's signed up, it'll be our local fire chief, Tyler Lambert.
Mr. Mayor, can I go last on that list?
Yes, you can, absolutely. And in fact, we actually have three that's scheduled for this topic, the fourth one is actually on another topic, so. And, and so I'll ask Kathy Keeler, is Kathy here? Welcome Kathy, please state your name and address.
My name is Kathy Keeler, I leave at, live at ninety-four Harvard Place in Woodland Park, and I am in favor of the zoning designation for Andrew Womack Ministries and the sanctuary and the Caris Bible College to be built there. I also am a product of, of the college, I just graduated in May. I went to night school there, and I found it to be a wonderful thing, so I was very excited when I learned that the property had been built in Woodland Park. I think that the economic benefits, I know that they're tax-exempt, and I know, I live near there, too, I, I've also don't like seeing beautiful land built upon, but that land was for sale, and a lot of other people could have bought it, and I think a lot of other things could have gone up there. I think this is a good thing, and I think that, that the people that stay here after they go to the college, some of them will become involved in the business community, some of them will be very involved in the community, for the benefit of the community, cleaning up parks, and, I mean, doing benevolent things, doing philanthropic things. I think that the character of the person that I have come across there, the hundreds of people I've met, are that they're very philanthropic. They're creative, they have ingenious business ideas, and I think that the ones that stay here afterward will really benefit, I think history will show it. I, I think at first, it, it might be a shock to see that many more people coming and going, especially on that street, where, you know, people who go there, who use that, that intersection every day, I think it will be a shock to see many more cars there at seven-thirty in the morning, and noon, and then at six-thirty and nine-thirty, I think that will be a shock, but I think in, history will show that it was a benefit economically and, and otherwise. So, and I also wanted to say, last time I was here, that I appreciate this process, I appreciate the fact that you let the public comment, I think that's wonderful. Thanks.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you Kathy. So other than, than Chief Lambert, anyone else wish to speak at this time relative to this? Yes, Bill, come forward. Yes, and, and our legal counsel has a brief statement to make.
And I, I do appreciate all the comments, I think we need to be very cautious and careful tonight, that we are in a hearing on a land use matter, and so really the character of the people who may be constituents of the application, if it's eventually built, is not at issue. I understand that there's a bit of an overlap, and we're talking about economic benefit, and I do understand that, so I think, you know, there is, we have to be practical about it, but I would just remind folks that discussions about the character of the constituency that would be moving in, or the students, is not appropriate for the hearing.
Okay, thanks, Eric, appreciate that. We'll take that under advisement when we're doing our deliberation. Okay?
Good evening, my name's Bill Page. I've been a resident of this community for fifty-two years. I am a licensed architect, and I own commercial property in Woodland Park, and, and when you look at the economic sense of Cherish Bible College, I see a lot of benefits to the citizens and the taxpayers of this community. First, I want to say I'm a taxpayer in this community, and, but, you know, my taxes get paid to Teller County, and they go to the, spread out to the taxing districts, and insured back with the municipalities, and then I want to talk about the, the tax I pay to the state of Colorado. A portion of my tax goes to help support state colleges, that are supported with state taxpayer funds. And I want to point out, Cherish Bible College is privately funded, none of my tax dollars go to support it, you know, for the educational program, and, and they're not asking for And they're not asking for support, you know, from the taxpayers. The other comment I wanted to make is that, I said I've been here 52 years, I've seen five economic cycles in this county that they go like this, they go like that, they go up and they go down. And the, I think this college will add some stability to our economy. And I'm familiar with a lot of college towns in Oklahoma and Kansas and Colorado and so on. And all those towns that have colleges have a more stable economy, and there's always a, kind of a good growth in, level of growth, it's not like this. And so, then the other thing I wanted to point out, the last 10 years in this economy here in Woodland Park and Teller County, it's flattened out and it's flattened out and it's flattened out. And it's, you know, you look at the number of water taps the city of Woodland Park sold the last four or five years compared to what they were selling 10 years before that. And so, you know, the other thing, you know, it's been pointed out, Cherish Bible College is paying for its campus infrastructure, and I support their plan very much. They've got good architecture, presentation and complimentary to our area. And I think that Cherish Bible College will help set a higher image for the Woodland Park community and Teller County for years to come. It'll be more stable economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Then Chief Lambert.
One of my five bosses here, John Eden, is going to come up for a second, too.
Go ahead and do your interview.
Tyler Lambert, Fire Chief for Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District located at 1010 Evergreen Heights Drive.
Hi, my name is John Eden, 100 Red Clover Court. I'm a member of the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District Board of Directors, Vice President.
Tonight, I'm here to talk a little bit about our, what I talked about two years ago when I came to City Council and talked about our ISO. And an ISO is insurance service organization. They're the ones that rates the fire department on their capability. Our current capability in the city of Woodland Park today is a Class V, which means I need to respond to every fire alarm, fire-related incident within the city limits or within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant with seven personnel. And currently, we have, we have a minimum staff of three on duty, and we're trying, we've been, here in this last year, been putting that at four. With the Womack Ministries coming in, being tax exempt, we operate off of 97% property taxes. 3% is other income, which that other income comes from a specific ownership tax, which is your license plates, in a nutshell. The other couple percent, we do national dispatch out on wildland fires, so that's where we get some of our money back to help fund the district. This is not Womack's issue, per se, it's all of the issues coming forth to you with the DDA being downtown. All that money there goes to the TIF, that doesn't come back to us when they start building that stuff. So we're going to have an issue coming along with our, with our ISO and the minimum staffing requirements. And that's why I'm here today. We asked Andrew Womack and Larry Bozeman, came to my office, and we talked about the PILT, which is Payment in Lieu of Tax. And they're unable to do that portion for the ministry part, but we did get it in the PUD that the housing district part of it will be taxable. We are going to see some revenue from that, a small chunk of revenue. You know, we operate now with about 29 nonprofits in our fire district. This is just one more. But also with that, the city of Woodland Park, the library district, they don't pay property taxes to us, and we protect their buildings too. And so we've got to be careful with some of the schools and stuff, too. So we've got to be careful of bringing all this other infrastructure in without supporting emergency services. And so I think it's time to talk to City Council about maybe doing that in the future with all this development coming in. And that's all I've got. You want to say just a couple things? And then I'll answer questions.
Thanks, Tyler.
I think one of the comments Bill Page made that I think is something to kind of get a little bit more thought about, and that was that the Womack Ministry is not asking for the taxpayers to support anything. In fact, it's sad to say, but they actually expect us to provide fire protection at no revenue to the fire district providing that protection. That's something I think that, heard it earlier in the presentation about being a good neighbor, that would be very much appreciated in the fire protection district, having some type of help to help offset the additional burden that's going to be placed on the taxpayers with providing the service to a $86 million complex. So I think just in the, you know, trying to be a good neighbor is a good thing, and I understand what you said, Erin, as far as characters and that type of thing, but I think where you said today as a council, when you start looking at the PUD, you have the ability to add conditions. We've talked about conditions for drainage, we've added conditions about wildlife. Why don't we go to public service protection and add some conditions about being able to fund adequately the additional burden that's going to be put on our emergency services? I think that's something that could be added and something that wouldn't be out of line to do so. I think it falls within the PUD and the condition permit to be able to do that. Also, I think it's doing what is right for the community. Thank you.
So some questions? I think, Ms., no?
Yeah, let's, do we do this during the public comment, or do I leave?
It's fine to ask a question.
Okay. Sure, sure. Remember, I'm the new mayor. How long can I say that?
No more. You're done. About midnight tonight.
I have a question. Right now, to meet the level that where our fire insurance rates won't go up, you have to have five or is it seven people?
Seven people.
You need to have seven. So whether or not Cherish College is there or not, you still need seven people?
That is correct.
Right. So adding them does not increase it from seven to nine or whatever. So there is no incremental cost to having Cherish College there because you still have to meet seven whether they're there or not. Is that correct?
Unless, unless we start running fire alarms or issues regarding to fire alarm structure related incidents on that property.
Okay. Now, if we had a state college out there, you probably wouldn't get any money even for the dorms, okay? But here, they're providing some real property tax mill right to the fire district along with all the other districts for those dorms. So you are getting some increment of funding that you wouldn't normally have gotten anyway.
That's a true statement.
Okay. So there, so you're basically saying that the, then that amount that would be of increase in actual calls, you don't think will be offset by the additional property tax that you would be getting?
I don't think I can say that wholeheartedly, no. It depends on how many calls we run out to that facility. As you remember, when Walmart came in, you know, there was this kind of talk when Walmart came in, they do pay property taxes to us. We get a significant amount from them. We run about 35 calls of our thousand to Walmart. And that's, and that's more to do with the medical side of it. We have not run false alarms there, we have not run fire calls to that institution.
Okay.
Let me, if I may, I'd like to ask a question. So Tyler, based upon your analysis of the plans for the project, what specifically do you see as your shortage in meeting the requirement? From a money point of view, equipment?
It's staffing levels.
It is staffing levels.
I could, I have, I have the right equipment, I just got to take a lot of it there. With three firefighters to that facility, with the GPM rating that it has on the facility, I've got to take three fire trucks there. It doesn't leave very many people to fight fire should we get one. One person driving each truck. So I'll take an aerial apparatus because of height, which is a million dollar piece of apparatus that's 30 years old. And then I'll have to take two engines. One's a 1,250 GPM pump and the other one's a 1,000 GPM pump. With the three engines or three trucks, I will have the GPM rating that I need to fight fires at that facility should have. The sprinkler system, the sprinkler system that's going to be installed in there is more firefighters for us. We rely on those because of short of staff, or, so that does help us. But we've got to be able to hook up to those, and with three people driving trucks there, it doesn't leave many people to do anything else. And that goes for any facility. That's just not this one.
Right. And what were you asking for them for, in payment in lieu of tax? I'm just trying to get a scope of what kind of impact we're talking about as far as costs and things.
But in a nutshell, what I was going with on the payment in lieu of tax is, if they had X amount of property tax that, if it was taxed, and the numbers that were thrown around to me were somewhere around $50 million project, the fire district could receive somewhere about $80,000 to $100,000 a year. And so when we asked for the payment in lieu of tax, somewhere around those numbers is what we were looking for.
Okay. Yes, Carol.
So if they don't pay it, we got to, right? Because you're going to increase our millage increase. So the taxpayer of the Woodland Park is going to eventually, because you have to be staffed, you're going to lose your.
We haven't asked for mill levy increase for staffing since 1995.
You will have to now, if you're going to 3,000.
Not just because of this facility.
I understand.
It's everything else that's going to be coming.
And I think you bring up a valid point, that there are a lot of nonprofits that don't kick in, that's, you know, stressing the system there, and, you know, it'd be interesting to see how can we scoop some of those costs without affecting the taxpayer of the county because you're going to have to ask for a millage increase, I imagine. Yeah, I mean.
Now's not the time to be able to do that. I don't think now's the time to be able to do that.
I understand that, but you, I mean, you're going to be overwhelmed at one point.
When we set the mill levy in 1995, we asked for six firefighters. Currently on staff today, we've got 12 firefighters, myself, and here just, two years ago, we put on 10 part-time firefighters. Because our volunteer numbers are declining. At that time, we had 35 volunteers. Today, we have five. They all work during the day, so daytime calls, we're going to a fire with four people, waiting for a mutilate company coming out of one of the other fire districts around us.
If I hear you correctly, you're suggesting that when we analyze these projects from the planning commission, that we should include perhaps maybe an impact fee to those nonprofits that stand to benefit from the fire district?
I'm here today because of the nonprofit that is coming in, but this goes along with anything in the DDA area that we might not get the taxes that we should be getting for.
Does that impact you? Now, what about the police department? How's that going to impact you bringing 3,000 more people here?
We're not actually looking at 3,000 people at any given time. The numbers would of course be distributed over the class day, so we might have 1,500 in the morning and 1,500 in the evening, or two and one.
Because you've got to respond to traffic accidents, among other things.
But, so they'd be coming in at different times of the day, so we had probably two arrival periods and two departure periods. We don't know where they're going to be coming from. Some of them will be on campus, some of them will be coming from Teller County to the west of us, some will be in Woodland Park living somewhere. So I can't really give you a good number on those things.
Is it going to impact, I mean, will you have to hire more police officers as a result of this?
Yes, sir, I think we will.
And which means that we'd have to pay for that.
But I can't give you a good number until we see it occur, and it will, it will happen over time rather than at once.
And understand that their funding stream, as you heard, was 97% property tax.
I think that's the difference, Councilman, is that, yeah.
But remember that our revenue stream is primarily sales tax. So we, you saw some of the numbers, we have greater flexibility to react to that growth than the fire department does.
Sure.
That I understand completely. I've got some other questions and comments for them in a second, but I'll wait.
Yes, Carol.
I am totally sympathetic to this issue. I've studied the payment in lieu of taxes option over a couple of months, but I'm not sure, John, that you're correct in saying that we can add that now as a condition to the PUD request. I think that the barn, barn doors closed on that horse. I think that that time, the time that we could have asked for that was during the annexation process, and that's already occurred. Am I incorrect, David? We cannot.
I'm going to defer to Erin on that.
Yeah. State law in Colorado is that in order to impose an impact fee, that impact fee has to be a ordinance on your books. Now, certainly, the applicant can come in front of the council and respond to the suggestions that were made, and you could hear the applicant's point of view on that. But yes, you cannot impose an impact fee, you could not deny the application tonight because the applicant had said no to a voluntary impact fee. But you could certainly ask the applicant what his response would be to the, some sort of an impact fee.
If I might ask, while you're having that discussion, even though, because that's, the fire's not a part of the city and not, that's not included in our ordinances, the impact that occurs, however, as a result of changes, well, let's just say because of the impact on fire service, which city residents are dependent upon, and if that would end up resulting in an increased cost because of the fire protection, is that allowed as a consideration by council that, because it does have an impact to the city residents?
I mean, I think you'd, I think the record would have to be very clear that the, this particular project is going to have a direct impact on the fire department's ability to service the rest of the community. So I think the record would have to be very clear on that.
Okay.
In Sally's presentation, one of the things that she had referred to was the condition for fire protection services and fire protection within the PUD. And I would contend that that's not being properly addressed. I mean, just having a loop of the water conditions and putting in the fire sprinkler system, I don't believe would be adequate to do what really needs to be done there to provide the proper protection. So that may be something that you can consider with that. I think really what this comes down to and what we're looking at as a fire board is that this is just one of the dominos that really is having some very large unintended consequences by this council. Because not only with this being tax exempt, and I do believe, you know, it possibly could be a great thing for the city and things, and bring people and maybe improve quality of life, I don't have any issues with that. Don't have any issues with the religious nature of it, don't have any issues with it being tax exempt. My issue is that the citizens of Woodland Park and the fire district is being expected to provide fire protection to an $86 million complex without any type of revenue to help provide that protection. We have asked Womack's to help us offset some of that, and we were denied. And so we're coming to you to ask for, not only for them, but what you also said at later times, when you start looking at the Downtown Development Authority, when those property tax increases all go to the DDA as a fire protection district, we get no additional funds to even start providing protection for that as well. So our discussion today doesn't just stop with this one incident. This is something that I've told the chief and committed that I'll keep coming back for in the future when we look at the DDA. Carol, if I need to be at the planning things and the zoning departments where we get it addressed there, we'll address it there. But it's, I think, a much larger unintended consequences it's having on the citizens of Woodland Park and the fire district.
Reiterate what I said before, is even if this college wasn't there, you would still have a problem. And you would have to go back to the citizens and says, if you want to keep your insurance rates low, then you've got to pay more in mill tax to get us up to the standard. And you can do an economic analysis as, yeah, we'll go down to five people instead of seven, and therefore. instead of seven, and therefore you won't have to have this mill levy of two hundred dollars a year, whatever. But your insurance will go up three hundred dollars a year, or whatever, so that you can show it's in the economic interest of the citizens of this town, that they should pass that mill levy, okay? So that their insurance, fire insurance rates will stay low.
That's something that we address as a fire board-
Yeah.
Bob, and that we talk about all the time, and it's something that we go through with our budgets, and we try to address that, and just like hiring part-time to save on all of the overtime hours and all the benefits that has to be paid for full-time or overtime people to be more efficient. And the chief has done a very good job, in my opinion, in really improving the efficiency of the department. That's something as a board that we continue to do, and that's something that we're obviously already talking about, is if we have to go to our citizens, we're gonna have to be able to show them, you know, if we increase your property tax by two hundred, that's gonna save you a four hundred dollar insurance increase. So you're absolutely right, that's what we're gonna have to do at some point. Before we get to that, though, if we don't, if we can look at additional protection that we're being asked to cover at no additional revenue, and we can stop some of that, we need to do that when we can, or get the income to help provide that protection.
And I think Charis has done a good job, or WOMAC, is by making the residents there not taxes them, you are, you can't say that you're not getting anything from them.
Well, I guess my only concern with how long is that gonna be before that is built? So I think that's-
We're estimating that about fourteen thousand dollars a year for the residential side of things.
But one final comment. But you are trying to do, get more volunteers to, I mean, you said it went from thirty-five down to five or something like that. Would that help solve the problem, getting more volunteers, get it out to the community, hey, we need volunteers?
It would if they didn't have to work during the day. And we just put on a volunteer fire academy and things, and we had twelve that started and one that finished. I mean, the efficiency of that is, because, I mean, you have all the liability of making sure those people that respond to the fire are gonna do a good job and, you know, not have, be a liability issue for you. We had eighteen applicants, graduated two, and it cost a fifteen thousand dollars to train them.
Okay.
Okay.
I wouldn't digress too much on this, but, hey, Carol, go ahead.
A question to Larry Bozeman or possibly someone else from your team. Will, do you have any plans to have an emergency cadre at the campus, your own fire response or medical response?
We're currently looking at buying a water truck or what we consider a small fire truck. I guess it'd be kind of a brush truck to, actually, the plan is, in case we have a fire, I guess, on the property, not necessarily for the buildings. So that's what we're looking at from fire. Medical, we, you know, we don't have anything medical currently. I would say that in the six years I've been associated, last six years I've been associated with the ministry, we've had one fire call in that six-year period. It was a false alarm. We had had a service provider out that was working on our, on our system, and they had a miscommunication with our alarm company, which created a false alarm. And that's, that's the only call we've had from the, for the fire department in the last six years. Can't say that that will hold true for the future, but that's, that's our history. You know, I know that, you know, the chief said that there's about a hundred thousand dollars associated with a fifty million dollar project, and if you do the math, the housing projects are estimated about eighteen million dollars, which is roughly two-fifths of the fifty million dollar project. So that would, that would extrapolate into about a forty thousand dollar a year tax benefit based on, based on the hundred thousand dollar estimation on fifty million dollars. I know that there are other housing projects that are being planned as a result of the Charis Bible College coming to the community, which would again generate additional property taxes. I can't necessarily quantify that. I think maybe Tim Hall is here, and I would, you know, would ask that he might would address that, because he's associated with another group. And then Tommy O'Brien is also here, and he's looking at some other housing projects around the community as well, so.
Yeah, I'd just say, I don't wanna get too far astray. I mean, you know, where you extend and keep extending out, maybe we stay focused towards the, you know, the issue that's right at hand. And, and of course, as we do our deliberations, well, we can, we can ask final questions, you know, of everybody once we've closed the public hearing as need be.
One more question, then, along the lines of fire and medical response. I think you've already indicated, Larry, that your history is that you didn't have a lot of need at the current location for fire response. What about medical response? Because I know that's what our fire department spends a lot of time doing, as in the example of Walmart. What, what kind of history do you have with a fire ambulance?
You know, very little. You know, we have had a few ambulance calls out, but, you know, the ambulance companies, of course, bill directly to the people that they provide services to, so I don't have a record of them.
All right. That's a good answer, though. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Well, Taylor, you and John indicated that you'd had some discussions with Larry or with WOMAC, and they weren't interested in picking up a share or what it costs you to run an efficient operation. Would anyone from WOMAC like to comment on that in terms of?
Yes, sir. I've had, I had a meeting with, with fire chief, and, you know, we have, we do have a legally granted tax exempt status, which, you know, exempts us from property taxes. And, you know, at this point, we have no provision in our, our plans, our budgets, our, you know, our incomes are based on donations, and, you know, we, we feel like, we feel an obligation to be good stewards of those donations and take every advantage that we can, such as tax exemption, to cover that. We have, we have, I did offer to the chief the privatization of the housing, and we're working with a local group right now to privatize the housing, which, again, based on the chief's calculations, relative to the overall building project, would generate approximately forty thousand dollars a year in property taxes.
All right.
That's if it was made at commercial, which would be residential, from what the assessor tells us. So that's where the difference comes in.
What is that difference?
About thirty-some thousand dollars. It would be commercial.
Yeah.
So the housing up there would be residential units, taxed as residential, not commercial.
All right. Any other questions at this point from the Tyler?
Do you have mutual aid agreements?
We do.
And how did, how, what was the reaction of the fire district when the hospital went in? Because isn't it nonprofit as well? And I'm not dispelling the concern, and I understand it completely with the DDA and with this project, but I don't know, I don't know how we're gonna fix it for this project. I think I know how we could help with, with the DDA. I don't agree completely about the no revenue stream. I mean, we've heard that they've changed it to the privatized housing. That will be a revenue stream.
Correct.
And I think the DDA also has increased the property tax. It will grow, so you will see some increase. It's not huge, and it wouldn't be the full amount as if it were, were developed somewhere outside of the DDA. But there is some minor increase in the amount that you would receive. Enough to provide the additional people that you need? Probably not. But at least it's a, it's a step in the right direction.
To answer your question, Mr. Butter, about the hospital, I was the fire chief at the time, and I don't think we were at the table of that when it was first going in, when we should have been. Same within two thousand and one, we should have been at the table at the DDA.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. If you could hang around, there may be additional questions.
Sure, I'll be here.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else from the audience want to make a public comment on this? There are none, then I will close the public comment. Is there any rebuttal from the applicant on what's been said so far that you'd like to make a statement on?
I already did unless somebody on the team has some.
Okay. So we may have additional questions from council. So I will turn to council at this point for any, any final questions on this subject. Yes, Bob?
This problem, nonprofits in a, in a small town, has been going on forever. My father, back in the mid-forties, right after World War II, went to a small nonprofit or a tax-exempt college. And the city was complaining that they weren't getting paid for their services that would be potentially provided here. And so what the college came up with is that every dollar spent by the students or the school was spent as silver dollars. Back then, they had silver dollars. And pretty soon, the town was flooded with silver dollars, and they said, we get your point. Okay? Because the economic benefits are measurable. I mean, they are major. And as this report said, but I just wanted to bring it back to a practical experience, how somebody decided to show it. And by having all those silver dollars flipping around, they made their point. Okay? So I know that the organizations that depend on real property taxes, that their real property value is going down, you're not necessarily doing too good. And I'm certainly glad to be with an organization that demands and sales taxes. So I sympathize with you, as I do with the school district, as I do with a number of other organizations around. And that's why I brought up earlier, the school district is gonna benefit with maybe up to a hundred students. That's at six thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars per student that the state will give in aid. And that would solve their budget problems, pretty much. So each is gonna be impacted slightly differently here, but I think overall will benefit. But I certainly sympathize with the chief's position here, but there is a constitutional right of certain organizations to not have to pay taxes. And trying to twist their arms to do it some other way around is, in a sense, one way of trying to violate that, that constitutional right. Okay? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Other comments? I have a couple of questions. Just for, for WOMAC management, are you guys gonna have, if you could come up, Larry? Are you guys gonna have your own security on site? You gonna have some type of security?
Yes, sir. We, we will have security on site. Currently, our security is from 3:00 AM until about 10:30 PM. So with, with housing, students, students on property, we will, I would estimate have twenty-four hour security on site.
Okay. And I'm sure you know the reason I'm asking, is that if you're having that, then that means less impact on, you know, the impact our police and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
As you work together. Also, in the report that we received on property taxes, and really, I'm really having a bit of a struggle with really what the amount's gonna be and all of that. The initial memo that we got, I think it's actually, let's see what it's called. It was in the purpose statement on page two. It indicated that the eleven-year model for the property tax for the Northeast Teller County Fire would bring three hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. I presume that's the amount. Well, let me ask you, what does that amount represent?
I'll have to defer to the folks that did the study.
It looks to me like the number that would be for the eleven years of the residential.
Is that correct?
When you divide that by eleven, you get close to the numbers that you referred to. Let's just save a little time.
Number, and what was the number again? I don't have that.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars.
Three seventy-five. And I think what that is, is we calculated both a direct property tax, which would come from the student housing, and we calculated a direct and induced number, which would come from the commercial and residential multiplier throughout the community. And I believe the three seventy-five would be the property tax that would come from the direct and the induced, or about thirty-something thousand a year. Just from the school, just from the residential itself, I don't have the exact number, I was trying to do it in my head as I sat there, it looked like about, I think, the fourteen thousand dollars that was mentioned seems a fairly appropriate number.
Okay. Counsel?
Another question along that line. How many permanent staff members will there be at the college?
Okay. Do you want me to answer that one, though? Okay. What we have is, we show that those numbers ramp up over time. So it depends on which year. But earlier, the sixty-six number had been mentioned. That was for the year 2014. And of that sixty-six, I believe there was an earlier question, how many would be local residents? If you'd like to know that as well.
Yes.
We don't know that for sure. What we have done is, the way we drive the model, we take the total number of employees, but then we estimate of those employees, of the earnings that they make, how many of those earnings will be made and spent in the Woodland Park, Teller County area? And for that, we used an assumption of about thirty-five percent of those employees would probably reside in Woodland Park. About ten percent more would probably reside in the Woodland Park area outside the city. And of those earnings, fifty percent of them would be spent locally, and fifty percent of them would be leakage that would go mostly down the pass. So we have a couple of different answers to that. But yes, I'd say about thirty of those sixty-six. However, there are other employment numbers that would also be local employment numbers that we have. Someone mentioned that we had estimated, we had run the models based on the assumption that twenty percent of the construction workforce would be local employees. We, of course, don't know what that'll be, but that's what drove our estimation. And in that particular year, we had one hundred and thirty-six estimated employment jobs, of which twenty-seven would be local. We also had the employment and earnings that would be driven by the students themselves, the expenditures that they have, and most of those earnings would probably be local. We did estimate fifty percent of their expenditures, that they, their earnings that they have, and they turn around and spend it on living. Fifty percent would stay local, fifty percent would go down the pass. And of that amount that stays local, it would generate another forty-seven local jobs. Additionally, we have the conference events, people coming in and spending money locally. That's a fairly small impact, but only eight local jobs. So roughly, if you wanted to look at the local versus non-local, we'd add twenty-seven and thirty, so that's about sixty, about a hundred, about a hundred and fifteen jobs out of a total of two hundred and twelve. And those numbers change, the ratios change each year as the patterns change, but what is that? That's roughly fifty percent of the total jobs.
I appreciate that, but I was driving more towards who would purchase a home, who would live here permanently and contribute to that-
Yes.
-property tax resource.
Well, you'll have, yeah, you'll have, one, you'll have employees of Charis itself, and say of that sixty-six, let's say thirty of them. You would have, the other people would be, buying homes would be the people who end up buying homes because they now have jobs from the induced effects here. There would be more employment opportunities, so there'd probably be more local population or more homeownership. So that's really what drives that. You can't, you look at the person, say, that person's an employee of this organization or that organization.
Sure.
Yeah.
Modeling. I love it.
Yes. Lot of assumptions.
Thank you.
Other questions from council?
I'd like to confirm that the pronunciation of the Bible college is Charis.
Charis?
Charis.
Yeah. All right.
I have a stepsister named Charis, and when I wanted to irritate her, I called her Cheris.
I have a couple of questions for Sally, I think. Okay. On this and everything that's been done, I mean, you know, my perspective, I mean, I think the WOMAC Industries has done, I think, an amazing job in working through and doing the planning and trying to limit impacts and all of that. I mean, when you, you know, I've, I've spent quite a bit of time doing a detailed study of the materials presented to us, and we got those, um, I don't know, four, six weeks ago, and, and had quite a bit of time for study, uh, in preparing for the session tonight. And I think that's one of the reasons, um, you know, council's prepared, um, for tonight's session, and, and therefore, the questions are somewhat limited. Um, question I have for you, Sally. As we, as, with the engineering and things that goes on, and the staff analysis that's been done, it's everybody's best estimate. But for example, on water, if, 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 if this were to be built and all once we find that the water flow or something is, is not quite what was projected, and, and some, something needs to be done on the city side, um, to correct that, um, who pays for that? What's the, what's the recourse in, in trying to correct that? And who pays for it?
Are you asking about the water capacity or usage, and if we're noticing that there may be some excessive uses, uh, leaks or that sort of thing?
It's really more, it's, it's just the whole thing with the water, the water flow, um, and, and all of that. I mean, I just, you know, if all at once, th- they're not able to get what, even despite our best engineering and, and projections, if there was an issue with that, and it has to be corrected somehow, how does that get funded and?
We, our analysis that Jim Schultz put together felt very confident that we could provide the 30,000 or so gallons per day at build-out within the projected capacities and within our projected growth of the city.
But, but I wanna build on that a little bit. Becau- because we have licensed professional engineers that do the initial analysis, we have licensed professional engineers that do the independent review of that analysis. As with any project, we write, rely on expertise, uh, experts to, to certify that and to, to verify that. So, it's a, it's a two-stage process, and they do their own internal review. As you heard Kip say, um, this adds about 2% of our water utilization. The short answer to your question is, if a mistake has been made, then the responsibility would fall on the city. But if it's a usage, if it's the quantity of water used, they're gonna pay for that commodity. Just like when you spend more to fill up your car with gasoline, because it's more that you're using. But if it's, you have the wrong kind of car, and you need to buy a different car, that falls on, you know, it falls on you. Uh, so, we have to rely on the experts and the experts that review it to make sure that we don't have to do those infrastructure improvements. We do that with single-family homes, we do that with multimillion-dollar projects.
Okay, very good. And, uh, and along those same lines, um, on page 12, um, it was item number three, "Proposed blemish, uh, shall not use, and use, shall not substantially injure the value of, of the sensitive property." And we got that with pla- that it complies, um, with this, because, you know, they've really, they've worked to, uh, you know, in their design and architecture and, and, um, you know, worked hard to mitigate, uh, the impacts.
Mm-hmm.
And this is just, again, for just kind of an understanding in the back of my mind. On any of these, if something like that, it's, it's been analyzed, um, steps have been taken. So, if it does, I guess this would be the case if anybody developed a piece of property and, and, and the neigh- you know, it, it impacts a, a neighbor in some way, then they have their legal steps that they can take to try to remedy that.
And you know that value of properties has many factors to it. Uh, this may be attractive to some people in that their homes that are close to a college campus makes it more marketable, uh, to those college campus, uh, students or professionals.
Okay. Counsel? Yes, Terry?
Well, not so much, uh, uh, I have no questions. Uh, actually, not a comment, but a compliment. And, uh, especially, uh, especially Larry and your team. Uh, this is probably the most complete submittal that I've seen, well, other than leaving my own home tonight, because we're getting one ready. But, uh, this is, this is an awesome job. Uh, I don't think, uh, I'm not even sure if, if the Walmart project was this complete. And, and you guys have, my hat's off to each and every one of your, your team members. Uh, from our staff, we've come to expect this. And, uh, Sally, Scott, Bill, Kip, David, this is awful good. It's, it's very informative and, and really good. And I just, uh, I really, uh, I really wanted, uh, to let you know that. And I've been in this industry for close to 40 years, and, and this is very, very good. I've only been a councilman long enough to almost learn what I'm doing. Uh, uh, but, uh, I, I wanna thank you for this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about one of the motions. Should I wait until we begin that process?
I have a question, but the first one.
Um, Cindy, you might be able to advise how our process will be. We'll take one motion at a time and, and, and have that and, and go through that and have our discussions and everything, and then our vote.
That's the process that was outlined. Excuse me.
But if your, if your question about, uh, a motion is more about process, please ask it.
Uh, it's motion number four. I wanted, uh, an explanation of those, uh, paragraphs that were, or those parts of the paragraph that were deleted.
Then I think that would be appropriate to take when we get to that.
Okay. I can wait.
Geez, I had those same question marks there.
What's so funny? Okay.
Other, um, either questions, uh, for any of the folks tonight, or any discussion that we wanna have amongst each other, uh, relative to this? More than what we've already had? No? Seeing none, um, I wouldn't entertain a motion, uh, the first one that we have. Oh, wait a minute. Aaron has a.
Yeah, and I, I do want to, um, just for the record, because our applicant is here, and we do have, with respect to motion number one, there are 14 conditions. Uh, the Planning Commission record did, um, reflect that the applicant came to the podium and, uh, agreed to all those conditions. But I do think it'd be very helpful for our proceedings tonight, once the motion gets made, to ask the applicant, um, to come to the podium and, um, just state for the record that he, um, agrees with, uh, and, and has no objections to any of those conditions.
Okay. Yes, Bob?
I move that the proposed project qualifies for a PUD district, and that we approve the rezoning of the property to PUD, and approve the PUD/PPD final development plan based on the findings in the staff report, and to be confirmed for the following conditions by the applicant.
I'll second that motion, but I would also ask that the applicant come and explain or, uh, comment on each of the 14 conditions.
And I think it's just enough to just state for the record that he does not object to any. Is that comfortable? If that's okay?
Okay. If the applicant come forth and just, as, as a part of this motion, we just want, uh, to receive a confirmation from you tonight relative to, um, the motion and, and, and the, uh, approval of the rezoning to the PUD, um, that you agree to those 14 conditions that have been included.
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Any, uh, any further discussion? Uh, thanks, Larry. Any further discussion by council? Then we will have a vote.
Thank you. Everyone understands the motion? Schaefer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And then I'm, I'm probably gonna have a comment after we've gone through the whole process. It kinda pertains, but, you know, we'll, I'll hold off on that. So, um, let's look at, uh, motion number two. And I will entertain a motion for it.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve ordnance 1162, changing the zoning of the designated property from agricultural to a PUD.
Do I have a second? Second. Any, uh, discussion by council? Then we'll have a vote.
Thank you. Motion then is to approve the ordinance and the zone change. Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And we'll move on to, uh, the third part of tonight's, uh, work on this, and, uh, I'll entertain, uh, a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council approves of the preliminary plat for the sanctuary based upon the findings in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Bravetto. Um, any discussion? We will take a vote.
Thank you. Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And then we'll move on to the fourth part of the motion. Fourth motion. Entertain that?
Well, I, I will entertain and, uh, move that we approve an amendment to the annexation agreement requested by Teller County as follows. And, uh, other than read that, I'd allow Sally to explain the change.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
These sections, uh, deal with the fact that Womack Ministries has a caretaker's home that is adjacent, uh, to the property at the end of, uh, Vista Lane. And it is outside the city limits. And when we initially negotiated the annexation agreement, uh, we were anticipating allowing the caretaker to have access, direct access. However, the county was very concerned that absolutely no public access should be allowed, and only emergency access. So, that is why that exception is struck in item B. Uh, and secondly, there was some discussion about allowing for a, um, garage to be built adjacent to the caretaker's home within the buffer area. The county also felt that that compromised the intent of the buffer, and Womack Ministries agreed to eliminate that from the PUD plan.
How is emergency access granted, then? Is, um, does the fire department have a key to the gate?
Uh, yes. There will be a Knox box on, uh, the gate, so they will have access to that key.
Any, uh, further discussion by council? Is it hearing none, then we will take a vote.
Thank you. Then, motion is to approve. Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And my comment is, through the discussions here and, and, uh, and really, in a, in a bigger scheme of things than the, um, project tonight, um, let me back up. I do really wanna thank, uh, everyone, those that, that came and, and, and provided testimony relative to the impact. And that includes not just what we heard tonight, but what's been provided to, uh, the Planning Commission. I appreciate the Planning Commission's work, uh, in going through all of that. Um, I appreciate the residents', uh, inputs and, and the concerns of those, uh, expressed by those that live nearby. I really appreciate how Womack Ministries has, has really worked hard to try to come in and be a good neighbor in Woodland Park and, and, and tried to, you know, worked hard to address those issues, um, I think in a very professional way. As mayor, I look forward to our future, um, work with you, and that we really have a, a good teamwork within the city and our neighborhoods. And, uh, we look forward to a, a long and mutually beneficial, uh, relationship between the city, the county, uh, and our residents, and Womack Ministries.
As we, as do we. Thank you very much.
Uh, that being said, Chief Lambert brought up some, some concerns that, that, that really weighs pretty heavy on, on me personally relative to, um, this whole fire issue and, and, and the whole tax structure that we have, and the, and the way that we, um, the way that, that, that services that are essential to our community, um, are funded. And it is, it is a, it is a problem, in my opinion, um, in the community, um, how it does impact us, that with the taxing authorities that we have and the way that, what they operate, that, um, it puts us in a, in a very bad and tough situation, in my opinion. And, and whether that's, um, you know, organizations such as, uh, Womack Ministries coming in, again, all, all quite proper, and also within the, the, the things that go on within the Downtown Develop- Development Authority, um, the fact that, that fire and ambulance, I'll just use those two up, up front, but there's others, and, and how the funding does not occur to support those organizations that are critical to our community, even though they're outside of the city itself. And so, um, I, I think, relative to fire, uh, Chief Lambert, I think, you know, we really need, uh, and, and you guys would be the lead in the community, I, I think we need to come together, uh, with some kind of a group to really look at that and, and the board work together, and, and with your all's recommendations on, on how that might be addressed in the future. Because, I mean, obviously, if, if you can't provide the kind of, uh, protection that our residents need as a result of these things that go on, then it does end up costing the taxpayer money in the form of, uh, a greater risk for, uh, fire protection. And, and, um, so I think we've gotta find some way to work through that. Uh, I know that myself, as the mayor, I'm, I'm willing to work, uh, with you in every way that I can, um, as, as we go forward, but I think that needs to happen. Any comments from anyone?
No, but I'd ask if we could take like a seven-minute break.
Yes, I think, I think that would be appropriate this time. We still have a couple of items on the agenda for night, shouldn't take too long. But let's break until, uh, 10:15, and we'll resume exactly at 10:15 if that's, if there's no objection. Thank you.
Are you driving back to the meeting?
Yeah.
Shouldn't take too much.
I got, hey, Trish, I got in a district, and I did, I set a sleeping.
It's sound like.
It's a bunch of friggin'. Yeah.
I've been struggling with this for over a year, and you're.
We get our council members to return to their seats?
Still be in the restroom.
Oh, cleared out.
I'm not sure if we're trying this.
You're gonna check up. Thanks, Bill. There he is, right there.
There he comes.
Okay, we'll now resume our meeting. I'll back to order, and we will move on to the next agenda item, which is concerns ordinance number 1160 and establishing a tiered system for our various fees that we have when new residences are being built. And for that, the lead on that, I'll turn to our city manager, David Butterby.
Thank you, Mayor. Council is extremely familiar with this proposed ordinance. We've had a work session on it. It was brought forward some time back. The idea is that for our residential projects, we would bring them into conformity with what we already do with commercial projects. It's basically to assess impact fees based upon the impact that they have. The existing ordinances treat a single-family residence as an entity, whether it's 1,000 square feet or 6,000 square feet. And what this ordinance proposes to do is recognize that based on the size of the residence, it has a different impact on our infrastructure systems. The staff report is very similar to what you saw before the work session. I don't intend to go through it again this evening. You're familiar with it. I'll respond to questions that you may have or questions from the audience during public comment. Thank you.
Any questions from council for David on this? Just for the public, I will go ahead and tell you that this has been worked, this whole ordinance and leading up to it was worked over a very long period within the Utilities Advisory Committee. I mean, lots of scenarios reviewed, lots of discussions, lots of input. And then, as David indicated, we had a work session on this with, on council, so we've all really looked at it very hard. And so, yes, Terry?
Well, David, the fee structure that's set up is based on the amount of fixtures that they're gonna put in the home.
For the water and the wastewater, that's correct.
Okay. Those fees aren't set in stone. We can adjust these. Council can adjust these at any time with information that they may get from staff. I mean, we're not closing the door on this. We'll be able to, we could lower them one or raise them.
Absolutely. By ordinance, you can change these fees.
Okay.
And that's the whole thing. We're making a change here, and it is an ordinance. And if all once, you know, a year or two, whatever, into the process, we see that it needs to be tweaked and adjusted and changed, the sitting council at that time can do that.
It remains a living document.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, John?
The only other point I would add is that David and staff confirm that this is, in fact, is revenue neutral.
Well, we, it's, the intent is to make it revenue neutral. We can't forecast the number of smaller homes being built versus the number of larger homes being built. A medium-sized home basically pays the rates that we have now in place. So it's difficult to predict that. But the intent was that it would be as revenue neutral as possible. It's not intended to be a subsidy for large homes subsidizing small homes.
Yeah. That's a better point to make.
Okay.
Very good.
Yep.
If no other comment at this time from council, I'll open up the public hearing. At this time, I'll open the floor for public comments on this ordinance. And I see that we have Rick Schaefer scheduled to talk with us. Come on up, Rick, and give us your name, address, organization, other things that you see, things pertinent.
Thank you. My name's Rick Schaefer, and I'm with Habitat for Humanity. We're at 700 Valley View here in Woodland Park. What I'd like, I'd like to speak in favor of the ordinance. Habitat builds homes for families that have steady job or jobs and don't otherwise qualify for conventional financing. If chosen to receive a home, the family invests 300 to 400 hours of sweat equity in building that home. And in return, that family receives a home that is sold to them at cost, not fair market value, at cost. And they also receive a no-interest 30-year mortgage for that home. So you can see the cost of a home is an important factor for the family. The lesser the cost, the more chance or more, the better the opportunity that the family's going to be successful in being able to pay for that home. Cost of the home matters. What we're about is trying to give families the opportunity to succeed, be successful, and to be good corporate, to be good citizens for the community. We want them to be successful and stable. The lower the cost, the better. And so we are very much in favor of this. Also, aside from the benefit for our family, it seems that this proposal, or this new, this change in the ordinance, is one that's fair, one in which a home that has less fixtures in it, water-using fixtures, pays less, seems to be equitable. That's all I have to say. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Okay. Thanks, Rick. Anyone else wish to speak on this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment. And ask council if they've got any questions?
Before we go to motion, I, because of the late hour, I don't want to shortchange the significance or the impact of this ordinance. It is one of the few ways that the city government can contribute to the ability of all economic castes within the community to purchase a home. But for the record, I think it's important to point out that the tiered system is used with our commercial taps. This is, this would just be in line with that policy. For that reason, I do support the ordinance.
And myself having served, unfortunately, Eric is unable to be here tonight, Councilman Smith, but he and I both are on the Utilities Advisory Committee and was part of this deliberation analysis process. And it really, you know, in our minds, it's truly, it's a fairness thing, you know, paying for, you know, what you really have the potential as far as use goes. And we thought, both Eric, even though he's not here, and I were very supportive of this while we were on the Utilities Advisory Committee. So that's my comment for the night. Anything else from other council members? Very good. Hearing no further comment, then I will consider a motion.
I'll move to. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve ordinance 1160.
Do I hear a second?
Yes, you do.
Do I hear a discussion? Hearing none, we will take a vote.
Thank you. Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And council, just for edification, the process for doing this, our practice, because this has been being worked for so long, we intend to implement this retroactively to those projects that are underway now, if it saves them money. We're not going to charge people more because they've already paid their fees. But there, I believe there was an expectation in the building community that this would have been completed some time back. And so we think procedurally, it works best to make it retroactive for those projects that would, say, be in the Tier One level. We think it has extremely minimal impact to the city, but we think it's, again, the right thing to do.
David, how many projects would that be?
Yeah, I think it's two out of 15. It's a very small number.
And these are projects that are actually in progress?
That is correct.
Okay. Do we need to do anything with that, or is that just part of your implementation?
That's me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everything sound good with council? Very good. We move on to our last item of scheduled business, and that's ordinance 1163, repealing a section of municipal code. And for that, I'll turn to Cindy.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder, Councilmember Bravetto brought this to our attention. Municipal Code Section 97020 is in direct conflict with current state law and needs to be removed from the city's municipal code. 1163 does, in fact, do that. And the city attorney has reviewed this ordinance and can answer any questions you may have of her. It would be our recommendation, following the public hearing, that you do approve ordinance 1163. What questions may I answer?
Any questions for Cindy? Hearing none, then I will open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wish to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions from council? Any deliberation? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to repeal, repeal ordinance 1163, municipal code Section 970 dash 020.
Approve ordinance.
Yeah, approve ordinance 1163, repealing municipal code 970 020 based on the fact that it's in conflict with Colorado revised statute section 1812 105.1.
Appreciate that, especially since that was your idea. Do we hear a second?
Yes, you do, but I'm not gonna repeat all that.
Any discussion from council?
A comment in that Councilman Bravetto has begun to do yeoman's work in terms of reviewing our city code and charter to find those ordinances that are obsolete. And applaud that effort and suggest that possibly we establish a task force to review the entire code. I'm not volunteering to chair that one, but Gary, thank you very much.
I think that's on the list.
Yeah, based on our goals and objectives, that's one of the task forces that we would do. And it certainly saves us some staff time if these were yeoman's work. Appreciate it.
So we'll, we'll turn to Cindy for the vote.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And then, I have nothing listed as new business. Would it be new business or as a council member comment?
Your choice.
Yeah, let's hold just for a minute. Any public comment tonight for anything not on the agenda? In that case, we'll do some reports, and you can bring those items up. I have a couple of things, upcoming events. Saturday coming up, we have the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Spring Cleanup and barbecue in Memorial Park, and that begins at 9:00 a.m. and runs to noon. Any comment on that, Scott, or?
We're planning on a big turnout.
Okay.
Hopefully, the council members would like to come around at noon hour to help flip burgers. I think that would be greatly appreciated.
I'd love to do that, but I think I'll still be getting rid of boys on Saturday morning at CSU blah blah. Also, on Saturday's a big day. We have the Saturday. Also, on Saturday's a big day, we have the Saturday Discommensary, the Woodland Music Series, first summer event at the Ute Pass Cultural Center for them. It's the Colorado College Festival Orchestra, and it's at seven o'clock, and perhaps even best, it's free. So we look forward to that, and we're getting into our season for even more art and, and music events in Woodland Park, and I think that's a great thing. On Saturday, June the sixteenth, we have the Southern Colorado Tour de Cure for Diabetes going on. So you can look for things on that. My last comment, I think Gary's, we had a training session at Pike Peak Area Council of Governments, Gary is my alternate to that, and, but instead of me talking to it, when I go to him, I let him give you an update on what we did there. And I will just, couple of things. I participated in the awards ceremony at the, at the high school back on May the twenty-fifth and, and, no, twenty-third. And what an, I really enjoy that very much to see the many accomplishments of our local kids. And, and we, you know, sometimes, and you've heard me say this before, you know, there's bad things that happen, and, and sometimes there's an overemphasis on that, that we have an outstanding group of families and kids in our community. Seeing what goes on at that awards ceremony is, is very special, and, and of course, then we had the grad, the graduation occurred on Friday, the twenty-fifth. So to me, that's all very special. As you heard me say earlier, I'm at Colorado Boy State, American Legion, and that's where we're actually teaching citizenship programs. Mr. Eden, who's out in the audience and spoke to us earlier, his son is there. I actually ended up in my city. We have three kids from Woodland Park participating this week, so. John, thank you for letting us have your son for a week, and hopefully he'll come back and, and know all about how to elect governments. Gary?
Oh, I accompanied David on this Pike Peak Area of Governments. I didn't know what it was when I went to my first meeting, but just to share with you all what it is, because you may not know what it is either, because I didn't. And essentially, what it is, it's a, it's a, it's a union of municipalities within El Paso County, Park County, and Teller Counties, and it represents a tremendous sphere of influence and joint coordination for federal and state funds focused on the area of transportation, aging, environment, and military impact. And Dave can give you an example of some transportation things that we've got as a result of our coordination efforts. But just to give you an indication, we pay $4,788 in dues every year for that organization. And what's interesting is we have a potential return on investment of $60 million in state and federal funds, and I think that's amazing. Some of the projects, Dave can mention one, but I thought, the one about aging I learned about, and because I'm aging, I guess, is it allows these people to become independent as seniors. And I think they have a lot of programs that aid seniors to become independent in their own houses. Great program. But the biggest funds that we get is in the area of transportation. Dave, you might want to mention some projects.
Actually, I'm going to defer to David. I mean, I'm being, you know, perhaps a couple of decisions made over the past few years of transportation projects that helped us.
I'll do some years and let Bill catch up, but it's not only transportation. We also are involved in air quality.
Yep.
Fountain Creek, stormwater, and wastewater, mini, and trails. Many of us sit on different committees at the Pike Peak Area Council of Governments and work at the staff level for decisions to go forward to the elected officials. Highway twenty-four projects, Highway sixty-seven projects, numerous sidewalks through town have been partially funded with federal grants that are funneled through the state. Transportation enhancement grants, air quality grants, congestion mitigation grants, and safety grants probably have paid for seventy percent of the millions of dollars that have been spent along Highway twenty-four and Highway sixty-seven, and many, many sidewalks throughout town. Some of the ones that we're working on currently are?
Well, we recently completed Lake Avenue Sidewalk Project behind us here, was done with transportation handsome money, and we just put another grant application in for that connector that was going to be built with part, as part of the YMCA, so that's a current grant that's down there. The Rampart Range Road Sidewalk Project that was done about five years ago was done with those funds. State Highway sixty-seven improvements were part of that whole program and all. We currently have grant applications down there for another park-and-ride lot behind City Hall here, which also have some secondary benefits to the senior center. And then we're also asking for dollars for the planning study, which is spinoff from the comprehensive plan, so.
One thing I could point out is that if we were to do that on our own without having that coalition, we probably wouldn't get all that stuff.
I would agree.
And so it's a pretty good return on our investment, I think. So, good effort on PPG.
And I might just add to that, I, I'm, I'm actually amazed at the process, and I think it is, is great that when we, together, the elected officials, we're the board, representative is on the board for the PPACG, how we come together, and there is, there's, there's give and take, and, and there's decisions made that even though it might not be up here, there's things that need to happen. For example, at Cimarron and, and, you know, at the intersection of US twenty-four and I-25, that has an impact on us up here. So it's, it, I think it's important that, that we're a part of that process. And I think as we go on, I'll probably enjoy that even more, and, and you really get to learn what's going on and, and how it can impact us, what's going on down there, and then those things that we're looking to bring up here. But appreciate the work that, that our staff does in serving on the various committees that then comes to the PPACG Board, so appreciate that. And appreciate Gary being the alternate, and we went down for the orientation, and also the mayor, Victor, was there with us, and, and it was, it was very good. So there's other things, there's team building that goes on kind of on the side because of the participants, and, and I think that's all good. Other things, Gary?
Uh, one, one other thing, if you can bear with me just for a couple of minutes, guys, in, in line with Carol's comment here, I've been looking at the municipal code, yeah, and I got a question for Bob over here. Bob, have you ever had a occasion, you have a house in Woodland Park, right?
Yes, I do.
Have you ever occasionally shoveled your, your driveway of snow when?
No, I have my wife do it.
Oh, you have your wife? What about if the city truck comes over and plows the road in front of your house and leaves a burr in front of your driveway, right?
She complains.
She complains. Where does she put the snow?
But, no. To the side.
To the side, which is probably an easement or probably on city property. You're in violation of Code twelve zero-two dash zero-one, which is a transfer of snow onto city property, is prohibited. You know what the violation for that is, by the way?
No.
You don't? Okay. Well, you can be assessed a $300 fine or, and/or up to ninety days in jail for not, for shoveling snow in the street. I don't know if any of you are aware of that. $300 fine is pretty stiff, and I think we can probably all afford that to some degree. Ninety days in jail, when you take a look at the impact of that penalty on an individual, when you put an individual in jail for ninety days, he may lose his job. If he loses his job, that's an impact on him, his family, because now the family's losing an income for ninety days, which means it strains our social service department because they'll probably have to go on food stamps and get aid, plus we have to incarcerate the guy, and we got to pay for that, too. I think that's a little cruel and unusual punishment. I think it's in violation of probably Amendment Date of the Federal Constitution. Let's give another one here.
But I do agree, though, that the city ought to be penalized for putting all their snow on my property.
That's true, too. But you see, that's, that's, what many, many people don't understand is up to ninety days in jail on that.
Well, we don't have a jail.
Well, no, no.
Before you-
You've got to go through a judge and get the-
Before you go to the next one, I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of that ordinance.
Well, no, no, it's not the ordinance, I just want, it's a different point I'm trying to make. I don't care about the ordinance. I got one more, and then bear with me just for a second.
Okay.
You own a dog, Bob, right?
Oh, no.
Does it ever get, did it ever get loose? Did it ever run out, jump a fence?
Yeah.
It happens to all of us. You're in violation six dash zero-four dash zero-six-zero, the statute, the code. Any owner, keeper, or possessive of a dog shall be in violation of such dog runs at large. You know what the penalty for that is, Bob?
Jail.
No. Partly, $1,000 fine, which maybe some of us can afford, one year in jail.
For the dog or me?
For you.
Oh, okay.
Heck of an impact. My suggestion is, I think, and it applies, by the way, these are two standard penalties in the code book. One is $300 or ninety days, and/or ninety days. The other one is the $1,000 or a year. And you, you find us up to, up to, max. The point is, you know, I don't think any judge is going to put anybody in jail. That's not the point. The point is it's in writing. And if it's in writing, it can be done. Okay? My point is, I think we should strike, in the penalty phase of all of these ordinance, the idea of putting someone in jail for the violation of these ordinances, because I think it's, it certainly, I think, could be a constitutional issue. I think it violates Amendment Date of the Constitution, cruel and unusual punishment. So that's only my suggestion. I don't know how to proceed with that. I don't think we have to make a motion on it, but I think it's something we should consider, because it doesn't apply to just this ordinance, it applies to all of the codes that are in this book.
Can we just shoot them?
I think-
Well, let's, let's don't get, let's don't get too casual in our discussions. Let's stay focused.
But that's my point.
Okay? And, and what I would recommend, we, we had our goals and objectives meeting, one of the things that, that is in there, I believe everything's mixed together for me this week.
Let me clarify for you then.
Okay?
You did have a discussion on reviewing the charter and the code. No one stepped forward to, to lead that task force, but you'll recall in the summary I sent you today that it would take two members of council to be a part of that task force, much like the others that we, we spoke of. I won't disagree with you about the penalty issues. There's civil versus criminal, and our city attorney will help us through that process. So, thank you.
So I think-
So now, somebody just needs to, to step forward, and we'll have those discussions as we continue on with goals and objectives, as who wants to be on that task force.
I mean, if we eliminate that one thing, I think I've shrunk it, if we could eliminate that one thing, it's a paragraph in here, it's several paragraphs, we could probably get rid of about fifty pages, and it's like-
Well, and I, I would say that you brought it to our attention, and I think that's good. It did come up in our goals and objectives meeting. Thank you, Gary. And, and I think as we establish the task force and do these reviews, rather than doing some of it just piecemeal here and there, that we really take a, a very smart approach and, and, and do analysis and decide those things that, that could be changed. And maybe if we could even get George Parker to come back and, and, and serve on one of those task force with us.
He wrote most of it.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks, Gary. Bob?
I have nothing.
Okay.
Do report back from the Downtown Development Authority Board meeting this week. It was held on Tuesday and in the public session. We did discuss two projects, one that has slowed down and one that has accelerated. Tamarack Center, we are familiar with that one. That's the building of the auto parts store and the Family Dollar Store. That engineering project is on, on track and, in fact, may actually be under infrastructure cost estimates. Is that correct? The one that is slowing down because of two appeals is the Woodland Hardware Store. The two appeals have been found to have basis, and they will go to the Board of Adjustment on the eighteenth of June. And after that hearing, we'll see how far along we'll move on that. Anything else to add to that, David?
No, I think you covered it very well.
That's all I have, sir.
Anything, John?
Pass.
And I would say, you know, Carol, I really appreciate the update on the DDA and, and, you know, the rest of us, as we're on the various committees, if there's something of significance that we give an update and, and share the information on what's going on with other council members and, and the members of the community. So at this time, Aaron? Our city attorney?
Mayor, I do have a, a very brief report, rather, I have a request for a motion. I would request that council appoint a special counsel to advise the Board of Adjustment in connection with the appeals that were filed last week. And I would recommend that you appoint Kristen Nordic Brown. Kristen has experience as both a municipal attorney. She represented many small cities in the northern metro area, including Meade and De Kono and various cities like that, and had served as a counsel to elected officials to cities and advising them on Board of Adjustment matters and other land use matters. She then has transitioned from her straight municipal law into a hearing officer and, and does now primarily municipal judge work in the city of Westminster. She would be charging an hourly rate of $145 an hour. And so, again, it would be my request that council appoint by motion Kristen Brown as special counsel to advise the Board of Adjustment in connection with the appeals of the hardware building and improvement design proposal approval.
Erin, how many hours do we believe she would have to be involved with this duty?
Well, given the short timeframe that the appeal is going to be heard on the eighteenth, there's not a lot of time for her to work in between now and then anyway, so it's, it's, I think, naturally compressed due to the schedule. She would have some hours of prep time to familiarize herself with the record. I would expect no more than five, probably two to five hours. I would also expect that she would spend some time with the Board of Adjustment prior to the hearing, just to go over process, and then she would be present for the hearing, and then she would also be in charge of acting as the scribe to produce the record of decision.
And just for record, the, the individuals that are bringing the appeals to the board, would they also be allowed to have counsel at, at their own expense?
Of course. And so I would think total, you know, depending on how long the hearing would run, it's probably twenty hours at the very most in terms of her drafting her, the findings and being present at the hearing. I would think that would be an upward number. She would also include in that her travel time, and she does live in Longmont.
And also for the record, if the, those individuals bringing their appeals forth to the Board of Adjustment are not satisfied with the result, what would be the next step?
They would have the right to bring an action in the district court, to have the district court look at how the Board of Adjustment made its decision.
Thank you.
And a question, now, will you be participating in that also?
I will be, I will be advising staff in that.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, a question, please?
Yes.
What's the source of the funds to compensate this new attorney?
We, in our budget, we allocate each year a bit of money for special counsel. We expect that there could be times that we have a need for someone outside of the city attorney, so there is a line item for that. I can't tell you what that amount is, but that's the line item it would be charged against. I think it's $10,000 or so that we have budgeted. In years past, we've had to use some communication expert lawyers and so on.
Okay.
And I, having served on the Board of Adjustment for a couple of years, when you get into things that are fairly complex and, and we want to make sure, we always want to make sure we have it right, but, but you really want to make sure that we've got, you know, the folks that are serving on the Board of Adjustment are, are citizens. I mean, they're appointed by us, but they're citizens, and therefore, we want to make sure that they have the tools that they need to make the right decisions, and I believe in this case, having that, that legal support is, is pretty important. Any other questions for? Then if not, then I will actually make a, can I do that?
Yes.
Sure.
That's what I thought. I would actually like to make a motion that we appoint Kristen Brown as a special counsel to advise the Board of Adjustment for the upcoming hearing on the eighteenth of June.
Second.
Any discussion? Cindy will take a vote.
Thank you. Schaefer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and I would love to further-
Okay, thank you, Erin, we appreciate that. David?
Two points, Mayor, that aren't on the agenda. The first is to announce that we will not be having a council meeting on June 21st. We've had this discussion in the past. And we will not be having a council meeting on July 5th. Symphony Above the Clouds, and June 21st is the Colorado Municipal League Conference. We will be inserting a meeting on June 27th to cover for those two. So on Wednesday, June 27th, at 7:00 p.m., we will be holding a council meeting, and then again, we'll be back on our regular schedule on July 19th. Secondly, sadly, I have to report that Walmart and Waste Management are suspending the recycling drop-off station at the Woodland Park Walmart tomorrow due to abuse of this free-of-charge service. Disrespectful patrons have been dropping off household garbage, waste oil, and numerous other things that can't be recycled and ruin those items that can be recycled. Employees of both companies have to clean up after these messy people. This valuable service will be missed, and we hope that a plan can be created. This valuable service will be missed, and we hope that a plan can be created that will bring it back soon. I'm in contact with both the manager of Walmart here and our Waste Management point of contact. So what disturbs me is that the discussions happened around noon today, and the service is done either tomorrow or on Monday. We have talked to the papers, we've talked, we put on our website, our Facebook page to get the word out, but my fear is that because people won't know, they'll still stack trash there even though there's no containers. So if you could, help us get the word out, and we'll work hard to get that back in place at some point.
Anything else?
There's a question.
I'd like to respond. Teller County Waste gave up that a couple of years or so ago because of that same violation. There is signs there saying this area is being monitored, video. Is there any attempt at all to, in fact, identify by license plate, the people that are throwing in toilets and, you know, I mean, I've seen toilets in there, toilet, you know, is there any attempt at all in it to enforcement, or are there any penalties associated with dumping garbage into it?
Well, it's a Walmart issue, it's on their property, and so they do have the surveillance cameras, and it would be up to them to initiate that enforcement. I doubt very seriously if we have been contacted to assist in that process. I do believe, however, that Waste Management has a recycle center in Divide. I can't confirm that, but someone told me today that there is one there. Do you know? There is? Okay. So perhaps our citizenry can, we'll get, try to get it on our Facebook page to find the exact location, so that perhaps folks, instead of bringing things to Walmart, can take it to the station in Divide. We haven't given up, but we're not exactly sure what the future looks like.
But at the transfer station, you have to pay to shoot them.
And I don't know if this one in Divide is pay or not, I'll find out. That's all we've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. There's nothing else? We will adjourn the meeting.